Calling the meeting to order. We have all students directors, directors present. And I'm looking for motion to establish the agenda.
So.
Second it. Any discussion, all in favor and can keep by saying aye, students?
Aye.
And board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two zero five zero. And moving to superintendent report.
Great, thank you. Most of the stuff is going to happen within the agenda, but I do have one. Piece of my report tonight, and that is in our audience tonight. And in a moment, I'll have her come forward is Melissa Robertson. Melissa is on your consent agenda tonight to be named the next special services director for the Mercer Island School District. Melissa comes to us. It's interesting, Melissa and I don't really know each other, but we know enough people in common that we kind of know each other. Melissa most recently has been at the Stanwood Comano Island School District where she's been for three years in the same role. Prior to that, she did some both regional and national consulting work and leadership and. And in education, and then before that she spent from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. She was the executive director of special services in the Isipaw School District. So and then she has a career before, has years before that, but we're extremely excited. You know, there were a few years ago, Lindsay Maya Titch, she was our director. You know, she wanted to kind of ratchet down a little bit, not be a full director. And we, she was lured away by Melissa. Or shall I say stole? And so, you know, we, we have some connectivity there, but I think Melissa's going to pick up right where Dr. movie is, is leaving off. And, you know, we know that we're only in an organization for a certain amount of time. And, and as I said in our last meeting, the five years that Dr. movies provided been fantastic. But I am super excited about Melissa coming hard district with MTS background, MTSS background, systems, structures, understanding of preschool through twenty one. And then we've got Hannah who's going to continue on, and I think they're going to be a dynamic duo. And really come together nicely in our learning services team. So with that, I want to bring Melissa up and give her a chance to talk a little bit more, but welcome to our school this weekend.
So you don't feel awkward being standing?
Thank you so much for having me. I am just thrilled to be coming here and I am, as Fred said, just. Coming from a background of special education, that is my passion. And I am currently doing a lot of work around inclusive practices and systems work. And I am just really looking forward to coming to Mercer Island and, and diving into the work here. So thank you so much for this opportunity and I'm, I'm thrilled to be here. It's a joy. So pleased to meet you all.
So her transition will start. She and Sue Ann and Hannah, they'll start some transition days officially July first will be her start. We'll work with Stan with Comano Island as we always do on transition days, both sides, so that their district can continue on with their great work. And we, I think are extremely fortunate to have you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Should I say hello? Should I shake hands?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Welcome. Nice to meet you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming down.
I'll shake your hand. Great to be here.
All right.
All right, moving on to board policy one thousand five. Board officer and board member duties, board member conduct. This is a discussion with guidance by council regarding First Amendment issues and policy endures. He said that we're, we're starting off, I believe today with more of an education focus. And then we will have further discussions, most likely at other times. So in fact, at other times, so this is much, this is more of an information gathering.
Yep. And so we have both Lance and Erin here to help guide the conversation, answer questions and. Help us as we think about the next steps in terms of this policy and, and your operations as a board.
Okay, well, thank you for having me today. My name's Lance Andrew. I'm an attorney with a law firm called Porter Foster Rorick in Seattle. And we represent a large number of school districts throughout the state of Washington. And so I've been asked by the board to talk a little bit about policy one zero zero five. And I do want to answer any questions the board has about the policy. And I am going to be focusing my comments, especially today on. The portion of the policy that talks about board member conduct for all board members. So that policy is broken into several different pieces. And there is a section on. The annual organizational meeting the boards have, board officer duties. So really I'm going to be focusing on the part of the policy that talks about the, not the board officer duties, but the duties that are kind of generalized to all, to all board members. You can go ahead and answer that, I guess.
I can't get this show properly. All right.
So when you look at. I'm just going to go ahead and run this. When you look at the board policy one zero zero five and that specific section that talks about the authority of individual board members. And if anybody wants a copy of the policy, I brought a couple of extra copies, but I know everybody has devices and everything. So let me know if you, if you want a copy. Talks a little bit about the authority of individual board members versus authority of the board as a whole. And so when we look at the authority of individual board members, the policy says that. An individual board member doesn't have authority to act on their own. It's really a matter of the, the whole board acting as a whole.
And that's primarily focused on acting rather than speaking.
Yes, acting on behalf of the board. But there's also some, some language about just the general duty to be prepared and attend regularly at, at board meetings. There's an RCW that's incorporated into our policy that says that if you miss a certain number of board meetings, you can. The board can declare your seat vacant. That's incorporated into policy one zero zero five. It describes the various roles such as site liaison that individual board members hold. And then responses to public comments and communications, and it has a cross reference to board one one, one zero zero nine. It does say that board members should not respond if they're asked a question from the public on confidential matters. And so we have some things that we have to go into executive session to discuss. And it is actually a violation of state law to disclose something from executive session or other confidential information. Under the municipal code of conduct. And so that's a, that's a parameter that the board has on, on their discussions with the public. We shouldn't be talking about, you know, a personnel matter that was discussed in executive session under, under a proper exemption that the board's allowed to talk about those things. But within those parameters, the board does have some First Amendment rights. And so there's, so there's going to be some limitations on a policy such as this. And the board has the right under the First Amendment to. You know, all, all the same rights as any other citizen. The right to disagree, to debate, to have a different opinion than other members of the board, obviously. Includes the right to communicate views privately and publicly. So board members have those rights to communicate publicly. And it's important to keep in mind though, that that right of free speech wouldn't include the right to disrupt meetings. And so if there was a situation where any member of the public or the board was disrupting a meeting, then the board has the right to take action to stop that disruption. And it doesn't include the right to disclose again confidential information from executive sessions. And there's the RCW that I, that I had mentioned earlier.
Is there any discussion on what disrupting a meeting means?
There is case law, not a lot, but there's a little bit. And, but essentially disrupting would be making it so that the board cannot get its business done. You know, we have an agenda of work to do and we do have a need to get through that agenda. The, the board has important work. And so if someone was, you know, doing something that was interfering, you know, shouting, you know, usually it's pretty extreme behavior that's disrupting a board meeting. And, you know, I, I should say that, you know, this is a general discussion about, about things. It's not intended to, you know, really focus on any individual. It's more a matter of what does this policy say and why does it, why does it exist? But I was asked to talk about the legality of the policy. And so, and I'll, let me, let me say this to the board. It's, it's always a little uncomfortable for an attorney to talk about these things in open sessions because we have attorney client privilege and we often give our advice privately. I understand the board wants me to talk about this publicly, so I'll talk about it publicly. If there are questions of people, you know, that are specific to specific situations though, those questions really should come up in, in, in a attorney client privileged communication. So I'll, I'll be talking real generally about the legality of the policy. I, I looked over it. I looked over the recent case law. I will say that the policy is, is legal the way it's written. I think where we would get into First Amendment issues is depending on how the board tried to enforce its policy. And so there is some recent case law, Houston Community College versus Wilson. There's a community college board, which for legal purposes is very similar to a school board. And so this was a Supreme Court of the United States decision in two thousand twenty one, holding that there was no actionable First Amendment claim that arose from a board censure of a board member. And a censure is just when, you know, four members of a school board say to a fifth member of the school board, we disapprove of something you did and we're going to come out publicly and say that. So there's no, you know, you don't lose money, you don't lose status or.
Within it in and of itself, it wasn't seen as retaliatory, I think, in the facts of that itself. The censure.
Right.
Disagreement, I think it was pretty clear what the disagreement was under the facts. Where one board member publicly had a different position and then formed a censure and it was seen as entirely political, but it wasn't retaliation. Doesn't mean that censure could never violate.
Correct. Well, those facts. The, what the Supreme Court said was that the censure itself was for speech. You know, that was for board members and I believe it was for that case, but it might've been more. Because, you know, it was a community college board in a different state, so they had a different structure. And I don't recall how many members they had, but a majority of the members exercised their free speech right to say, we disapprove of something you did. And the resolution in that case. You know, came out and said that someone's conduct was not consistent with the best interest of the college. The person had sued the, or the college for a couple of different reasons that they felt were, you know, not valid. The board also, you know, called the conduct reprehensible, imposed certain penalties. They said he wasn't, Mr. Wilson was the name of the, the defendant. They said he was ineligible for election to the board officer positions for the two thousand eighteen calendar year and ineligible for reimbursement of any college related travels. So there were some actual, you know, specific things that happened. And, and, and what the Supreme Court said was, you know, a censure is. It, it's not something that is going to trigger those First Amendment concerns in that context of a board censuring another board member. They, they did say, we're not talking here today about, for example, a reprimand of an employee, which is a very different thing. And if you reprimanded an employee for exercising their First Amendment rights, the court said, we're not talking about that today. And that would be a different case. So we've got, got to keep in mind, we're talking about elected officials doing something with regard to other elected officials. But, so we know that, we know from that case that policy one thousand five is, is enforceable as long as we're not trying to do something beyond. You know, something like a censure in terms of the enforcement. But there are limits on how much this sort of a policy can really be enforced from a practical standpoint. And so the catch twenty two is that school districts have very limited authority to regulate board member's speech. But individual board members can create liability with their speech. There's a FERC decision saying that as an individual board member's comments regarding a union leadership to the union leadership crossed the line and, and even though, you know, that was one board member. There's been a few cases where elected officials were deemed to have created a hostile work environment for employees. And so we know that there are those situations where this catch twenty twos and.
So it's basically like speech can get you in trouble like in any situation, right?
Well, it, it can, it can create liability for the school district.
Well, I mean, sure.
Which is unique in, in the sense that board members are people with their own First Amendment rights. And we can't really control what they say, and yet what they say can get us in trouble.
Well, the board doesn't have the ability under free speech to sexually harass someone. Right? I mean, there's not a free, I mean, there's nothing unique about that, right? Exactly. Well, I mean, it's, it's prohibited speech.
Right, but it's not, it just doesn't fall under that.
I mean.
Just to be clear.
Nothing unique about being a board member.
Just to be clear, because I'm looking at the Harvard Law Review article about this case right now. And it wasn't just a matter of him disagreeing with the, the rest of the board's funding decision. It was that he publicly criticized his fellow trustees through automated phone calls, a website and a local radio. He also hired private investigators to surveil the, the, the college and one of the fellow trustees at her residence. So that is why the board censured him. It wasn't just that they disagreed with them. That would be a kind of bizarre thing to censure someone for. It was this behavior that was pretty outside the norm of their existing rules and bylaws. Just to be clear.
Yeah. And I, I bring the case up not for any reason other than to say that we, we have some recent First Amendment case law that kind of addresses like a governing body's ability to sort of try to regulate the speech of other members of the government body. Right? And that's kind of what was happening there. But the government, many of the things that that individual did, the government could not punish that person in, in a more meaningful way. Right? Other than exercising that First Amendment free speech. If they had taken, you know, salary away from an employee or something like that for that, then that would have been protected. And it would have been an illegal retaliation.
And the district could have like, I would assume like, or the, the, the school board created liability but tried to prevent the individual from disagreeing publicly on positions, correct? I mean, as an abridgement of the.
Well, I'm just saying.
I think you're drawing a conclusion that isn't. I think what, I think what the case is saying is that the board can say that they can limit or they can censure a board director for anything that they say. It's not a violation of First Amendment. The issue is whether or not you can do anything more than censure.
And if you can limit the speech in the first place.
No.
I'm wondering if you'd say that.
They didn't try to.
I'm wondering if we can maybe take a note of any questions we have to address. And I'd love to get to the end of this informational presentation because I'd be interested.
Let me move on a little bit. I think I'm going to answer your question a little bit in later slides.
I had the presentation earlier and get back to that question.
Well, it's right at the top of it. Shall I just say?
That, that would be my fault. I, I, I really did complete this today. It's just been a busy, busy year. So what boards can do about it? So, you know, if a board has concerns about the way someone's communicating, someone is violating these norms. There are some tools that are available, but they're pretty limited, right? And so changing leadership roles, you know, our, our policy says we're going to appoint a board president. And that board president is empowered to actually speak for the board in some ways that everybody else is not. And so if the board has an officer who is violating these norms, they could decide that person shouldn't be our. They shouldn't be our speaking agent any more than they, than they are as an individual board member because we're concerned about them creating liability or something like that. So that's something that if that was happening, the board could do. Distance the organization from speech that can cause liability or harm. So if we had an individual or a member who was, you know, doing things that were. Problematic for some reason, the, the board could make a public comment of some sort. That's, that could be a censure. It could just be saying, you know, we don't agree with that, that statement that was made regarding, you know, for example, something that sounded discriminatory to board members or something like that. Censure was something I've already sort of discussed. That's, it's on a list of possible things. Public right of recall in the state of Washington is fairly limited. Whereas in many states, recall is almost like, you know, the can have whenever you want to have an, have another election. It's very limited to malfeasance and misfeasance in Washington state. But there is a recent case, you may have followed it out of Richland School District where there were three board members recalled all at once. Something pretty unique in terms of any case I can remember that, that they were actually recalled. And the court did say that violation of a mandatory board policy could be grounds for recall. But in that case, they found that the policy was written more as a. Not, not in a mandatory way. It's, it's more, you know, kind of, this is what people should do or, or, yeah, advisory. And so in that case, that policy did not constitute a grounds for recall. But the policy that was mandatory, they said was grounds for recall. So that's something to be concerned about, you know, for individual board members thinking about, okay. Everybody on the board, or at least the majority of the board has set these norms. Could violation of those norms cause a citizen to initiate a recall petition? That's not something initiated by the district. That is a completely citizen driven process, but it's.
The judge first has to find that there is a violation.
That is correct. Yes. The process is that a citizen initiates the petition. The court then determines whether it's legally and factually sufficient. And then if it's legally and factually sufficient, it then goes to gather signatures.
And in the original one, it was the masking mandate. So it was pretty clear and it was above and beyond board policy, which was the state mandated health policy at the time. If I recall there.
The Richland case involved a school board voting to rescind the governor's mask mandate in their district before the governor had rescinded it, about a month before the governor was set to rescind it. So interesting timing there. And yes, the court did rule that that decision violated several provisions. They had violated the Open Public Meetings Act, the way they did it was with the court said, or what the recall alleged. And that there was also two policies that were violated. One was the more permissive policy I was just talking about that said, you know, board members should conduct themselves this way or that way. That's, that policy in that case was very similar to our policy one thousand, that you may be familiar with. So, so in that case, the court said, well, that, that policy is not really written as a, as mandatory. But there was another policy that said the board would follow all laws. And the court said that was a violation of that policy. Or to the extent that, you know, the, the recall petition alleged a violation of that policy, it could be grounds for recall. So two different outcomes based on two different types of policies and the way the board chose to write the policy. Can we go to the next slide? So I'm going to do some takeaways and then I do want to answer questions. I, I just want to say disagreement is inevitable and often healthy between school board members. And so the fact that people are having debate is good. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. So nothing I'm saying should be, you know, heard to suggest otherwise. School boards have important work to do and it needs to be able to get done together. And that means certainly we try to avoid disruptive conduct or, or, or comments or anything like that. And try to get everybody. The analogy we use a lot of times in public schools is, you know, everybody rowing in the same direction rather than, you know, one side of the boat rowing one way and one side of the boat rowing the other way. I, I live near the University of Washington where they do the rowing and I watched a couple of the races last weekend and can imagine what it would be like if, if half of them were going the wrong direction there. So school boards have the right to adopt norms of operation. That is something the board can do, has done, and there's nothing unlawful about the policy one thousand five the board has adopted. But the options for enforcement of that are very limited. There is not going to be a. You know, the board can't say four members are going to vote to remove a member from the board, for example, because they violated our norms, they went out on Facebook and said something that we don't think was appropriate with our norms. That's protected free speech and because of that, the options are really limited to exercising free speech to voice our disapproval for that and a few other very limited things that removing officers. And so the. Outcome of that is that because those enforcement options are limited, the legal enforcement options are limited. Building team on the board is very vital. You know, relationships are very vital on a school board, especially because of the important work that school boards have to do together. And at some point, you know, whatever it says in our policy, we just need to be able to move in the same direction and go in the same direction. And so I, I think that's an important non-legal point around the policy is that, is that the lack of an adequate legal remedy for, for concerns really drives a need to work together and to be collaborative.
So Trevor and I both wrote, so I know what it means to road together and timing and synchronicity. At the same time, one of the things that I guess concerns me is that analogy to elected officials seems a little bit perhaps misplaced.
We're really not discussing.
Well, I guess a question is, is disagreement in discussion for non-confidential matters? Is it limited to the board table in the boardroom? Or does that extend both as private individuals and elected officials that are, you know, I think, you know, should talk with the constituents? To talking with those, you know, with the constituents about open issues? And just to clarify, any sort of misunderstanding that discussion and debate about non-confidential matters are not limited to the board?
I, I think that's a, again, the board has the right to set norms as to what their expectations are. For example, a very common norm is that we want board members to be clear when they're speaking for themselves personally and when they're speaking for the board. I think most school districts have an interest in making sure that that is clear. So the board can set those norms that limit what people say about the district, certainly when speaking on behalf of the district. The board can set the norms that it's set here saying, you know, we talk, don't talk about confidential matters. What, what the limitation really is, is on the enforcement. And so I'm making the same point, I think, again, that I made before, but it's responsive, I think, to your question, which is. Yes, the board can set those limitations. The board has very limited ability to enforce the limitations other than by saying we disapprove in, in the formal ways that we've talked about. Okay?
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, or. But can you talk a little bit about like, or is this a great time to talk at all about like? Things that come into our board email that then, you know, that we're, if we, if we feel like we're being obvious, like we're saying something as a board member maybe, but not on behalf of the board versus like, you know, Jody Lee mom. And I'm thinking specifically of say, like a politician who has emailed my school board email, asking for my endorsement. You know, that's a routine, like you've given me money now and you endorse me publicly. And I say, and then I'm on the website as like Jody Lee, we're surrounded school board member, is that okay? Or should I have or not, should I not be doing that? Even though it's, I'm not saying, you know, the board endorses this politician, I'm saying. I happen to do this job and endorse this politician. Or is that just not even something that we need to get into?
I, I don't see that as a violation of your policy. And I, unless, you know, someone has a piece of language they want me to look at, I just, I don't see that in the policy.
The board could endorse as the whole.
Right, we could vote to endorse.
But it's a paper and you can endorse and have it say like board member. You know, like Jody Lee, we're surrounded school board.
There's a difference between identifying your, who you are when speaking publicly and implying that you're speaking on behalf of the district. Right? And so to me, that would be, this is who I am. You know, I'm a board member in endorsing this candidate. I don't see that as violating any of your.
And just to compare, PTA has a specific provision where they do not endorse. Right? And so you can't mention, you know, whether or not, I mean, people can know something about you, but you can't say, you know, your name, PTA president, I mean, I think that's, I mean, they have a specific prohibition and they're also not elected officials.
Yeah.
Right?
And so that's not where I thought you were going with that for sure at all, because I, thank you. Because I thought that the question was going to be about emails that come to the board as a whole.
Emails that come to the board as a whole, and it's by our board policies, it's the board president that is supposed to respond. On behalf of the board to, to the citizens or, you know, students or whoever has emailed, but. We also sometimes, individuals will also reply to that person, but I just, and I think that the norm at least for our board is just to, I. To make super clear that you're just responding as a single board member, so not, not wearing your non-board hat, or not with your board hat off. But just say, like, oh, I happen to see your, your email and I, you know, have some information for you, like, I am replying here as an individual board member. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, that's kind of the norm for us.
Absolutely.
That's not written into a policy.
I should add that, you know, what I kind of put together for the board was from a legal perspective, um, there's a whole nother. Side of this discussion that is what's the right way of communicating as an organization, and I have strong opinions about that. Um, and I, I really think that, uh, we are most effective as a school district when we have. Uh, one person responsible for those messages, because otherwise people might get two different messages from two different people. You know, it's kind of like, uh, that kid who goes to mom and gets told one thing and then goes to dad. Um, I'm always the second one they come to, um, and, in my house, and, and gets a different message and it's like, you know. We want, we want a united message from the school district, and so I really do think that's the right way to communicate, um. The way we accomplish that is through policies like this that say we have, you know, the board president responsible.
And it doesn't mean, you're not saying that, that individual board director is gonna have different opinions. It's just the way in which those opinions are communicated.
Well, yeah, I think communicating, uh, so communicating an opinion, uh, especially a political opinion. That's gonna happen, right, I, I mean, uh, what I would be concerned about is. You know, what's, what's the status of the school calendars for next year, right? Coming to a board member, um, there is a right answer to that question from an organizational standpoint. Um, and we don't want misinformation coming out because one person thinks the status is X and one person thinks the status is Y. And probably the superintendent or, you know, someone in the business office is gonna have the most information about that, and so. That's the sort of communication protocol that I'm talking about is, is not someone. You know, out on their own, discussing their own opinions about things that are going on in the district, which is, you know, protected speech. Very limited, you know, sort of control over that versus. We have a protocol for answering questions that come into our organization, about our organization, to parents, constituents, et cetera. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, when it's not black and white, it's easy, right? And then it's, it's, it's the, you know, disagreement is, is great, I think it fosters getting to the right. The, the best decision possible, it's the, and then, and then how do you define harm? I mean, for me, the, the chaos and the way in which the discussion takes place, I think is hugely important. The chaos and hours that some of that craziness, um, really controversial or, you know. Not necessarily controversial, but where people have really strong opinions, um, of those issues. It, it takes like hundreds of admin hours where they then can't do their work. And to me, that's tremendous harm, because that takes away from our students, it's also their duty to do their job. And then also frankly, you know, board directors' time, having to deal with all the chaos and, um, to me, that's tremendous harm. So, um, you know, I think it's, uh, I mean, like I said, when it, when it's, when it's. Correct or incorrect, it's easy, when it's, but, but when it has to do with opinion, um. And if you have a norm of, you know, you discuss it together and the board, I mean, certainly you could gather information. But the broadcasting of what your opinion is prior to any board discussion, um, is really challenging. No, I, I don't disagree with you that it's, you know, free speech, um, but it certainly is, I think, a violation of norms. Um, and I think it's, it causes tremendous harm. Uh, but it doesn't mean that that person can't have that opinion and certainly shouldn't be sharing it as part of a discussion. So, that's the gray, right? I mean, we live in a world of gray, it's hard.
Lance, what did you, oh, sorry, no, no, go, no, no, this is your time as a board, yes, your time as a board, go.
Thinking that, uh, revising this and seeing that it was last, um, revised at, uh. Two thousand nineteen, that maybe there's certain portion that is missing there and it might be time for you for. And, and that includes that each board, new board, will make a commitment to make sure that, that we build this team. That matters, that we will create today, and I mean that, there might be something that, that need an extra review, this.
And I think that would be part two, which would be, you know, a study session to begin with, have you have a chance to discuss that and then. Um, go, or two of you could work on it and bring it to the board, however you want to do that. My question, Lance, was just, you know, what have you seen from school boards? You know, the difference between how board members have shared opinions before a big topic. Then there's a vote, the board has spoken, three, two, four, one, five, oh, whatever, and then the conversation afterwards. So I'll tee it up with, you know, we have, um, our nutrition services contract coming up. And we'll say that company A, you know, Director Martinez, Tucker and Lee support. Uh, company B, Director Glowitz and Lurie support. There's leading up to it, there's a lot of disagreement about which one is gonna offer the best nutrition services, then we vote. We obviously go with A and then B on the, on the backside, they still might disagree. But what can you, what have you seen with school boards there where it's worked well or created issues?
I, I, I think there's a legal answer and then there's a, what's the best way to run an organization answer, right? So, um, in terms of the best way to run an organization answer, I think there is a, a common norm. We do it sometimes in collective bargaining, which is another big part of my job is, you all know. Um, and, uh, we say, you know, once we've made a decision. We support the decision, even though it might not have been, you know, if my thumb sideways on that decision, that means I can support it. Um, and I will support it, uh, and if we didn't reach the decision by consensus, then, you know, that's maybe a different thing, but, uh, so I think the. The same concept could be incorporated into the, into the board's norms of just, you know, we really, we're gonna try to move on once we've. Once we've decided an issue, even if it was three, two. Not, obviously, under the First Amendment, someone who's disappointed with the way a vote went is free to go out, um. You know, legally and continue to voice their disapproval. I mean, all of you are running, you know, for elections once in a while and you might wanna say, you know, I'm running on the platform of, we should have gone with food service. You know, company B instead of A, you know, maybe that's my thing, um, so that's pure political speech that we, we just can't really, uh. You know, we shouldn't even be trying to regulate it, uh, at the same time, um, it is harmful. Um, to the organization to have someone undermining a decision that was made. So, I would say if, if that's the strategy that someone's using, they should be understanding that they're, they're potentially harming those discussions. They're, they're undermining, um, the, the public's perhaps perception of the organization by saying. Oh, we should have gone with a different food service, certainly, uh, that food service company is not gonna feel very good about the fact that they're being talked about negatively or, or, you know, maybe there's. Being called a, a bad choice, so there's all kinds of consequences that come about from that behavior, um, but. Again, back to the legal remedies being very, very limited, for, um, other than, you know, the things that are kind of set forth in our policy.
Thanks. Um, just the A, wanting to get rid of pasta Mondays, so, uh, keep your problem with it. They wanted A, but hey, you know.
I'm sensing we don't mess with pasta Monday. Remember that.
Any other questions for Lance with help clarify?
We will be doing study session, discussion, and then, you know, from there, deciding if it's something we wanna dive deeper into.
It's good to see you all again.
Thank you.
It'll be on the A P test tomorrow, all of us.
What? We do for A, we want, you guys wanna do that, so someone maybe can. I think you guys wanna go to student report? I mean, it's up to you. Uh, we leave that out, then we come out at five before six. Okay, so we are moving to for A, board policy twelve fifty, students on governing board, our student representative has reported. Is this the finale for you?
We have one next, don't worry.
Um, so, I just wanna start by thanking you guys for coming on the luggage last week. Um, I know that some of our S S A students were super excited to meet with you guys and ask their questions and share their projects, so they've been working on all of it. So, thank you guys for coming, and if you have any like suggestions for the next luggage, feel free to send them over to Efa. Um, so. Um, so starting with the elementary school, at the elementary, the school musicals and other similar shows have been happening, kind of the typical end of year stuff. Northwood Heather is having their school musical on May thirtieth, and Island Park had a talent show last week and the student said it went well. So, all I'm tracking is will be happening later this year too. Um, other fun athletic events that have been happening is the fifth graders had a field day at Island Park. And the elementary schoolers are loving the new playground at West Mercer.
And in addition, uh, there's a lot of like leadership groups that have been like doing a lot in the schools. So, for example, at West Mercer, they have their peer mediators and the leadership ambassadors that kind of like help lead the students and help diffuse conflict on the playground. And then, um, at Lakers, they also highlight belonging at every, every Friday during lunch, um, with like a shout out. And Northwood has free seating every Fridays for different classes to sit together in the main pool, because usually in elementary school, you sit with your class, yeah, so. Um, that's fun, and, oh, one concern that we've been hearing from our, um, superintendents to advisory council elementary members. Are about like poor language being used, apparently like on the buses in school that happens.
The middle schoolers had S back testing last week and they had a block schedule, um, some of our S S A members. Were complaining about blocks and told them to wait for high school, um, students have been doing the spurt, um, during health class, which is. Evidence-based approach to identify individuals who use alcohol and other drug, um, adversity levels. The students have, uh, been, our S S A students have also reached out to their principals and their principals have been really willing to talk about their projects. The IMS robotics team of eight middle schoolers became state champions and division quarterfinalists at the twenty twenty four. Vex World Championship earlier this spring, uh, which was, um, in Dallas from April twenty eighth to the thirtieth.
Yes, and then two brothers, um, Kanae and Adra, I hope, I, excuse my pronunciation, but. Um, they won national level awards of excellence in music competition with the P T A reflections, which is super huge. And then, um, also two Islander Middle School eighth graders, Alice and Kavya, were guests on the Studio Thirteen Live. Um, after winning honorable mention awards for the New York Times How To Writing Contest. And they won, one, one of them wrote How to Survive Middle School Hallways, and one of them wrote How to Play Out of Tune on the Flute, really creative. And they spoke, um, and they had Ms. Ms. Gall was alongside them and they were on TV, which is super exciting. And here we also see, um, the middle school class engage, the aerospace class doing their parachute unit, which is super exciting. I remember taking that class, it was super fun, um, yes. I'm gonna guess it, no, it might be a few more folks. Oh, yeah, uh, Mr. Dupree's class, they also, um, they took a period and they learned how to fly fish, which is really interesting, yeah, so they're in the gym, just like. You know, flying fishing, just typical, um, yeah, and then the. And then, um, the fitness class also practiced some different exercises on the T R X bands. Um, which is exciting equipment to use, yeah.
Okay, uh, you talk more then.
Oh, yes, okay, and then now onto the high school, so, um, the N I H S design committee had their second meeting. And, um, at this meeting, we were formulating vision boards, um, for like space and, and the high school and also. Discussing like areas of improvement and areas that are currently doing well, so we're kind of, uh, I'm on the committee and we're currently like kind of prioritizing what. Is like what should be changed and what should be kept at the high school. And more meetings will continue to occur, uh, till the end of the new school year and also till next fall.
This past Saturday was Crest Fest, um, there was a base meeting, a plant sale, and as you can see, a lizard visitor, it was really great, um, community event. Also last weekend, the survey of two masters finished up, um, and everyone said it was a super fun play, um. Last week, we had an assembly for A A P I month, um, and the speaker spoke about Japanese internment. It was led by a student, Amelia Hawn, who organized the speaker, and she did a really nice student video. The, um, the assembly was moved to the middle of the day, we've been like putting them in the middle of the day and it's really increased attendance, uh. Our drama and choir program won the distinguished scholastic award, our Petri Club was recognized by the mayor for their commitment to service. Um, as you, you guys heard plenty, um, A Ps are currently happening right now, we're in the first week and next week is the second week. Um, Debbie Hanson and the rest of the team has made it super smooth for organized and like really clear for students. Um, the admin also has monitored the bathrooms with D U B A detectors, which has been nice. For our spring sports update, our track team went to the Oregon relays, we had over twenty athletes compete. Last year, we was like, one of the first years we went and we just had about like ten, so we've almost doubled. Um, Owen Powell beat the high school national record in the thousand meter by over second, and Victoria Rodriguez became second in the nation for high school speedball chase. All of our spring sports had their senior nights the past couple of weeks and our entering playoffs are finishing up their season. This includes softball, baseball, boys and girls across, boy soccer, badminton, track and field and more. Um, and here's some of the photos from the events, we're honoring our seniors or talking about playoff playoffs and stuff. So, yeah, if you have any questions, let us know.
Pressure's on either. Baseball's tonight, yes, uh, girls, uh, girls across us tonight, track is today, are they, are they right now, can you go?
Tennis, we're hosting, aren't we, on the.
Oh, yeah, tennis, yeah. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Um, that's five fifty-two, should we take a quick, should we do the next item or should we take a quick break before we hit six o'clock?
I don't think we have an item that we'd be able to get done in that amount of time.
Then let's, uh, we'll just be resistant till six o'clock. Then let's, uh, we'll just be resistant till six o'clock. Oh, and I was told to stay on track. Girls lacrosse, baseball. And Ava Ridley, whatever your needs are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, all right, so we are back in session and moving to recognition and public input.
Great, no public input, so we'll run into recognitions. Uh, and we'll start with our students. Uh, we're here with Mr. Smiley tonight, and to recognize four who are here, but a total of six, uh, Mercer Island journalists on the newspaper and the yearbook side, um, who've placed at the annual Washington Journalism Education Association Write-Off Competition, which was held earlier in March. So, um, we wanted to make sure as many could be here as possible, so we appreciate you being here. Uh, these students competed against high school students from around the state, uh, in place in all but one categories that they entered. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Smiley to talk a little bit more about this, then we'll have our students introduce themselves. Um, but it's been a steady stream of tremendous students coming to you throughout the year, and we wanna continue that. Um, but one that has con- been a constant for the board since I've been here is our journalism and yearbook. Um, year after year, they've done, um, a tremendous job at, at both state and national competitions. Um, Asha's been, uh, involved, uh, our very own Asha here, in our newspaper. Um, I know editor, were you editor last year too?
Yes.
Okay, so two-time editor, um, of our newspaper, but Mr. Smiley?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what you said. Um, in every environment that I'm in with these students, they distinguish themselves. Um, at the state level, and then Ashwin, we went to the national conference as well. Um, we just have, uh, fine students, and we have a great program. Um, and that shows basically every single year, every single year. So really strong performance about newspaper and yearbook. Um, and I'm really, uh, I'm honored to be able to actually work with these people. I'm sorry to see some of you guys gone.
Students, would you like to introduce yourself? Who you are, your grade, award you may have won, and anything that journalism has done to enrich your experience in high school and, and beyond?
Sure. Um, I'm Taylor. I'm a senior this year. Um, I'm editor in chief of the newspaper with Asha. Um, and I competed in newspaper layout, and I got an honorable mention. Um, I think journalism for me throughout my four years has just been a place of community. Um, and my growth of relationships with all my journeymen friends and journeymembers.
Um, I'm Maddie. I am a junior, and I'm the lead photography editor. And, um, I did the competition in sports photography, and I got an honorable mention in that. And, um, journalism has, it's, it's been really fun. It's been a lot of like making new friends and also learning a lot of things. I think something that I really like about it is that it's very like student-led. Like, I think that probably more than half the things that I learned were from Taylor. And it's just, it's really cool to like get like taught by people you're on edge.
Um, I'm Ashwin. I'm a junior, and, uh, this year I'm the website manager and features team leader. And, um, you know, I was lucky to win, um, uh, superior at the state level and an honorable mention at the national level. And, um, I think one thing that I really like about journalism is just that it's given me an opportunity to like branch out in the community and get more involved. I know I've talked to some of you on this board for, for articles before, and, uh, it just makes me feel like I'm, you know, a stronger part of the community and contributed, contributing to something larger.
Uh, my name is Jordan. I'm a junior. Um, I'm the managing editor, and I competed in news writing at state contests, and I won a superior. Um, I was here a couple of weeks ago with the SA, and I talked about journalism a little bit then, but I think really, as they've said, it's just a big aspect of, I think, my communities in school and where I feel like I belong. Um, and I just get to work with so many great people and get to report on so many things that I care about so much. So, yeah, it's been a great addition to my high school experience.
Right.
Ashwin, you wanna add anything about journalism, just in general?
I mean, I didn't compete last, this year. I competed last year, and I got a superior in news writing at the, um, state level, but um, I think like this group has been like one of the most impactful things of my high school career. Like, it's a place every day where like I know I'm gonna be able to connect with people outside of my friend group and hear new perspectives and be able to write and, um, do new things. And obviously, the team is amazing, and every year we go and we win awards, and I think the juniors are gonna do just fine next year, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, if you would, we're gonna do a picture with our school board, and so you'll come right up over here, and before we'll drop you. Needle down the sock down.
That's right.
I know, I know, I'm just gonna. Uh, watching the show?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. I watched it all through.
Yeah, I know, I, very good.
My wife actually kinda likes.
We turn to the side. All right, on me. Three. Three, I don't want to get to table one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay, thank you.
This is great, Ian. Thank you very much for turning it on.
You don't, I'll send your link, tell them the video and the photo.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate seeing you again. See you. We'll see you. We'll see you again. I'll probably see you on that.
Coming to graduation?
There's so many students that I work.
But you count them.
Background.
Yeah.
Um, but I really like it. A good world. Other recognitions, um, tonight, uh, hopefully you also saw in my monthly, uh, update to the community. We have Asian American Native Wine and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, uh, Jewish American Heritage Month, which also, uh, this past week on the sixth was, um, our National, um, Holocaust Awareness Day. Uh, we have Mental Health Awareness Month taking place this month. Cinco de Mayo, and thank you Director Martinez for the information today. I appreciated that. Um, to get a little bit more in the video of, uh, Colorado was, uh, helpful too. Um, it's staff appreciation week, uh, right now, and we had, uh, National Teacher Appreciation Day yesterday, uh, or excuse me, on Tuesday. Um, but, you know, as I said in that statement, and I, I do wanna reiterate it, um, we oftentimes talk about our staff as everyone is an educator. Um, you just might happen to have a different job title, and that job title might be a crossing guard, and a para, a bus driver, a principal, a director, a teacher, um, a librarian, and, but we're all educators, and so we celebrate our entire profession this week. It's also National Schools, School Nurses Week, and we had National School Nurses Day, or it's coming up. Uh, we had School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, uh, which actually falls in April. And the last one is School Communicators Day. Um, you know, there's been a number of opportunities, um, that I've been part of to really express appreciation for Ian and the work that he's been doing. I think the PTA um, took time yesterday to acknowledge, uh, the work that he's doing. Um, one of the high school counselors, uh, made a statement is when I was up there for the counseling event the other day that said, you know, one of the best things that we have done for our kids is put them out in as much social media because of the way that universities are looking at candidates and wanting to see and just the amount of publicity. And so in honor of that, Ian, it is national, uh, your day is tomorrow, and so. Thanks for all of your different day, but appreciate it.
Picture? Wait, do you want me to take?
Okay, picture. Let's do it.
At least.
All right.
Oh, my God.
One, two, three. I don't wanna get the table. Two, three. Awesome.
Is there an official position?
Gotta wordsmith something.
Okay, who's posting it? And then one of us could go in and edit what you say, right?
All right, now we can return back to two.
Okay. Um. Two B, Board Policy eighteen hundred O B six, budgeting, financial planning, revenue and expense projections for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Come on up, Rosie. Um, as they're coming up, the next two agenda items, two B and two C are not action items, but rather uh, more information for you as a board as we lead up to May thirtieth, when we will have a full study session on the budget. In preparation then for June, when we have, um, when we bring the actual budget. So the action for all of this takes place at the end, um, but under the direction of our finance team and HR teams. Uh, rather than trying to give it all to you at once, they like to give you updates along the way. So we're ready for two updates for you, and one is our F two O three. The other is our revenue and expense, and then we'll bring up our classified FTE and our certified FTE. With that, I will turn it over to Director App.
One of the things we wanted to bring you this year is the F two O three. It is the revenue generating tool that the state provides us after the legislative session ends. It'll show where new revenue is coming in. And it breaks it down into the different areas that we have. Um, this is only state funding. They only help us with state funding, not federal or local. So we're anticipating about a one point six million dollar increase in our state funding for next year, even with the declining enrollment. The one concern we have on our side is the increases in the items listed below. The Washington risk pool is gonna be going up almost fourteen percent. Um, utilities are going up about a hundred and sixty thousand, and some of our other contract services are going up just because that's the way it is in the world right now. The problem is the state only gave us fifty-one thousand more for this side of the budget, the AMSO budget. They don't fully fund your insurance or your utilities. In the last two years, um, the risk pool has gone up a hundred and fifty percent in the last six years. We've gotten two percent more funding in that area. So that's a shortfall on the state. So that's a shortfall on the state. So we're anticipating to have a li- about a million seventy four thousand for salaries. And benefits for increases. Any questions on this?
What's um enrollment for the enforcement? Uh what what's that based on?
Um our thirty eight fifteen that we approved, that's missing. We input four different sheets. We import our basic enrollment, special ed bilingual, and then just a couple of other things throughout the um reporting generates. So we're going. Yeah, that's the number.
Just as a reminder, we're at thirty eight eighty this year. We're hitting it almost exactly every month, um so we're gonna be right there. Um the thirty eight fifteen, we do anticipate an increase from current kindergarteners to eleventh graders. Um a net increase, but the delta will still be the high school graduation class. Asha's class compared to the incoming kindergartners.
We're only point six five up on our enrollment right now.
Okay, um just for clarification, on the uh apportionment that. When you say that there was fifty six thousand on the M S O C side, the other side then is like the I P D and that kind of thing. Is that what's that other generator on that?
Right, and what we did, what I did is I analyzed the report when it came out and I separated how much was for salaries, how much was for M S O Cs. How much was for benefits? I went through the whole report. So we could really truly see how much was our salaries and benefits for the next year. I thought there'd be a greater increase on the M S O C side because I heard the state's talking about it. It's only twenty eight dollars per student. It was started at like two hundred plus and it went down to twenty eight.
For everybody?
Yeah, for the whole state. Even though everyone's M S O C side have been been increasing rapidly for the last three, four years. Because after the pandemic, everything has increased. And so materials supplies and operating costs, sorry.
But that's been touted as a big win.
Pardon?
That's been touted as.
Oh, oh, just getting twenty eight dollars more per well kid student, yeah. It it is a win.
As opposed to a big win.
Yeah, yeah. Just the fact that they were looking at that side of the budget for the first time in many years is nice. But they did not make enough adjustments.
On a non-budgetary, so okay, so that tells us that that's somewhere to push.
It is. It real truly is mostly on your um costs that you can't control, like your insurance costs and your utility cost, right? And we've done everything in this district to save energy. I mean, we shut down everything anytime we can, but still, it's still increasing every year.
You want to take us to the expenditure comparison document?
That'll be Jackie.
Yes. Uh so a comparison of our expenditures by funds, this will be page five of our budget book. When we do the present file or the preliminary presentation um on June sixth. And so we're looking at the general fund um being a slight increase in our. Cost from twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five. Uh capital as well is we are planning on, we're putting in our budget. The. Hope expectation, possibility the bond will pass and therefore the um percentage increase is seventy five percent. Because we want to make sure that we have the capacity available for we for those expenditures that will happen. If we don't do that, then we would have to do a budget revision and that's a lot more work. And we don't want to put you through that as long as us. Um that, yes.
It is. I just back up and ask you a question, Fred. We, so is this kind of the bond, like cap tech levy that?
So this kind of combines both a little bit and I'll let Kate talk a little bit more about it. What this does is um if the bond passes, then we will likely start. Well, we will sell the first part of the bonds and then we'll start the initial portions of the project. This builds capacity in there so that you can start that without coming back to for major budget revisions. In the event it doesn't pass, it just shrinks and we won't be spending.
Right. It's it's a way that gives us the opportunity to start the projects immediately after the bond passes. If not, we would have to come back to you with a resolution asking to change the budget, then it has to go to the state. They can delay us up to six weeks before we can pa- um start projects. So this is just a preliminary, a way to be proactive. If the if we don't pass the bond, the state does not care that we have extra expenditures budgeted. As they worry if you go over your expenditures, not if you're under your expenditures.
And just to be clear, if we're we're, if we propose a bond. Determining what the scope is and then, you know, these are all ifs at this point.
Yes.
But we, what you're saying is that it's this is for planning purposes, the best way to do that.
Yeah, I would just need a little bit more background before like, I mean, we have bonds until like final budget. But just to understand, you know, how common this is and when it's on.
Um so the flip side of that is the debt service fund where we would be processing the bonds. So you can see the increase in that as well. Um on the A S B associated student body fund, we're, of course, you know, looking at the their various clubs and their activities. And so they're projected on just a small increase as well. Our transportation vehicle fund, um we've put in the capacity to possibly purchase a bus. Um we don't have any in plans at this time, but based on our depreciation schedule. Um this gives us the possibility of doing that as well with data. On the, on the next slide, we we have the objects within the budget of the general. And specifically, uh as Kate mentioned, we are anticipating having a million seventy four available for salary increases. So while these are projected numbers, they are subject to change and if there's significant change, we'll come back to you um later with that information. Uh and our, so what we've also done is looking at for the budget is. We met with our different school administrators, their um staff, the departments. And looked at where are we spending our money on supplies, materials, operating costs and what cost savings can we make? So that we are able to spend that into the salary and benefit areas that. We will probably be needing. So that's why you're seeing a significant decrease of booking, um point two seven percent. Also with our purchase services, our utilities, um the insurance rates going up, that's where you're seeing that nine percent increase. Uh travel is, it looks like it's a really large decrease. It just means that we're doing a lot more of our professional development online and as opposed to sending. Um staff to um different areas for traveling for that purpose. And then the capital outlay, um the twenty eight percent decrease really is more of a, an accounting change. That we've um been implementing is if the item itself costs more than five thousand dollars. It should be charged to object mine. Um we're in the past, we were putting on like TV purchases and so forth. In the object line and so we're um going back to making sure we're compliant with the accounting manual in that regard.
Can I ask a question on the travel? This is probably more a question for Fred than you guys, but um. It is. I'm thinking of the value of of in-person relationships, learning, all that. Do you feel like and and also wanting to meet the needs of budgets? Um are you funding that you're sacrificing? Are you having to make choices with, or you know, I mean, how do you feel about that in terms of balancing?
Yeah, I mean, an example was I was just talking to um. To Noble Williams today about some work in Gillingham work that we're looking to do. And so we have a choice that we could send people to the training. Um or we can spend the money to bring the trainer to us. And so there can still be an in-person piece on that. Or there might be a hybrid type of option where some of it, so. And I don't think we're gonna see as, you know, in terms of a diminish in what we're gonna try to do. It's just trying to be more mindful of how we're spending that money. Um. So that's my answer.
This is just an explanation of all the reasons be- behind the the previous paper. It gives you a little breakdown of what the increases and decreases were. The next one. This is our revenue by source. This will show you how our revenue comes in through um federal, state and other local. We always give you um twenty three, twenty four and our projection for twenty four, twenty five. As you see, the local revenues are going down, um decreased enrollment. Um we also are, um C T E is no longer charging class fees. There's a bunch of reasons why that is dropping slightly. You gotta think as our enrollment goes down, less revenues coming in. The state has increased and the federal increased because we did add a little bit more capacity in our budget and that's where you have to budget it. We're pretty close to our budget this year. We had some unexpected large bills that we are getting reimbursed for. But we were really close to going over, so we wanted to build in just a little bit more capacity just in case. It's nice to have that extra room on the revenue side. If we get a large grant and we're too close to our budget, we wouldn't be able to accept it. So that's what we're trying to do is make sure we have the ability to take any money we can get.
Is this, I mean, it's federal, so is it primarily special education?
It's primarily that's where you'll get the money from is the federal government. It's a rarity that you get an outside source that just wants to give you five hundred thousand dollars. It might be, I wish, um but there is. But usually it is a federal grant and it is where the accounting manual wants you to budget capacity. So we're following the accounting man.
And special ed is our largest spend.
Yes, yes. And the last next one is more of a, just another view of the revenue for you to see it broken down into percentage changes. And below each of them, you will see a reason and a description of why the change. And if you see, you know, our locals dropped, the state went up, of course, and then the federal went up because we increased capacity. Any questions? And we'll be going all over this again on June si- six, so.
First on March thirtieth, the study session, then again on June.
March, you are May. I'm not gonna be here. You wanna wait till next year, but that's awesome. Yeah, I'm gonna be there.
Um so now we'll turn our attention to the um certified and classified F T E and that's two C.
So um really, sorry, did you? Um so the reason why we're here, obviously with over eighty five percent, eighty seven percent of our budget um being driven by F T. We started, I think last year was first year we really brought to you in this format. Um, can you see it okay? Okay, uh we brought to you in this format sort of our F T E over time. And this is sort of a projected allocation of our F T across the district and we have both a certificated and classified. And our goal is to really make sure we have the right people in the right places to have provided a good edu- uh educational environment. To meet the evolving needs of our students. Um so we're gonna start with this certificated. And you'll see here, um and I don't know if you have some pre-prepared questions, but we are. If you look back in the twenty three, twenty four school year, um the total F T E that we actually had was two eighty five point seven nine. If you look at our budgeted F T E, it was only two seventy seven point zero zero. Some of that is because we added sections. So we had budgeted, um we presented a budget last year and then we had more kids, so we added sections. The other thing, we had K three compliance, so we added F T there, um because if you don't, if you're not the compliance, you actually, you pay a penalty. So it's always that balancing game to make sure we do that. So this year we took the approach of trying to be closer. Similar to what uh the business office has been doing with respect to enrollment. We're trying to be uh more on target, what we anticipate. So this is our budgeted F T. So you look at our two eighty four point six two is what we predict to have in our F T. And our actual, our total F T is the same, because right now we don't know, the year hasn't started, but this is where we we are. Um if you look at sort of our largest increase, you'll see at our instructional support. We're going from forty six point three nine this year to forty eight point four seven. And this might seem odd since we just reduced at three point one, so we just had a rift at the high school. Um that you see increases in our certificated staffing. Some of this is due to the fact that we are. Um we've had increases in our B C B A, which is uh board certified behavior analyst. Sorry, and increase in our uh site F T E. And that's because we've actually been able to hire people and bring more people into M I A where some of those services were contacted out. Just because of the needs of the students, we've been able to bring, um just as the needs of the students evolve and change. Um we're able to meet them and hire people who meet their needs in our own staff. So you'll see increases there, but it's not necessarily. Um uh increase in our dollars because it's just moving a dollar from one bucket to another. Um and it's really student needs that drive that. If you also look at just our teaching, you'll you will see the decline. In our our um going back up to teachers, we're going from two twenty two to two eighteen point three five. So you see that increase. Principals, we're staying constant. And then you see a slight increase in our uh supervision, special education and student services. And that's part of the model that we're working with Dr. Booby because we're keeping her on to make sure we have a healthy transition. And so she can continue some of the the work um that she's doing with respect to some special projects and what have you in super tennis services. So that's really where you see the increase there. Um do you have any questions about the certificated before I move on? And Rosie, is there anything that I missed? No, you got it.
I think the only thing I was gonna point out to is in the budgeted capacity, um you heard Aaron talk a little bit about K three compliance. Um we put some, we put a little F T E in there in case we get a surge in elementary enrollment in K three. We're looking very good right now with our enrollment, but if we go past that and we need to add in um extra F T E, then we built it in. So there's been some things that that as um Aaron mentioned, we're trying to be very close between our projected with our budgeted and the actual. Um and so that's why you see that margin so close this year.
So moving on to the classified sheet.
So the classified is is relatively similar. Um we are adding some health support under the other support category. So like S L Ps will have an S L P A that works with them and S L P A, that's an assistant. And then um we're adding a C O D A and uh. So each of those categories will have like an assistant that will work with the more directly with the students. And then we did add one H R F T E this year and one network ad as they were bringing in the um the laptops to the high schools, one one laptops. So it's it's fairly consistent with just a little bit of app. Question?
Um I was just gonna say another question, but I like this format. I think it's, I think it's quite good. Um. I mean, there's always a question, we can add more information to just enrollment numbers and try to get contact, but then like. Sort of the beauty of it being simplified is is lost and I think, at least from from me, my perspective, I think this is very helpful. Uh to sort of see the trends over time, so thank you.
I agree, Ken. Yes, beneficial in a lot of ways. I mean, I assume that this is done every year in preparation for bargaining with the year. It's the um in preparation for bargaining, but for to have actual numbers rather than, you know. This group is so big. It's like, well, what does that mean and what is it compared to? So yeah, thank you.
So if there's any changes to this between now and um, you know, when we come back together in May and then again in June. Um so you might see some slight changes because of that, but um wanted to get this to you well in advance, so you have something to be thinking about.
Alright, I mean, one thing, just just not to talk about it today, and I think you explained it, but I want to better understand. With our enrollment declining, how is it that our revenues are going up? So just for bigger picture and more discussion, I want to have a better understanding of that.
We are finding ways to save money by combing through.
We are finding ways to save money by combing through every single expenditure. I've gone through, oh, I went to, Jackie and I went to every building, went through the material supplies and operating costs. Found areas that they were over budgeted and didn't need anymore, we're not gonna try to affect the schools in any way, we want them to operate. So that was our initial one, then we start looking at all the departments and find where we can save money. So we were trying to find savings in areas that we've had budget before and capacity for and, and not reallocated and keep it.
So we're not getting more money, we're making smarter.
We're making smarter decisions, we're writing our schools to fit our actual enrollment, which is a key factor too. And also by budgeting our, getting our enrollment more accurate, then we'll really know what our revenue is and what to expect. Yeah, and not overestimating enrollment, that's the key.
And that's consistent with our contract, um, with MIA, it's consistent with your expectations around, uh, rip resolutions. That we look in all the spaces possible that don't involve, that are as far away from students as possible, and that's a part of that process.
And by hiring those two individuals and taking them off the contract service, we're saving money. We, we look at, you know, the, what's beneficial for the students and for the districts.
Any other questions, comments? Things you wanna explain more at another time?
You always can do that. I know, thank you, no, thank you, thank you. Alright, moving on, um. So we are on four B, board policy eighteen hundred O ten, instructional program approval of twenty-three, twenty-four, high cap program plan.
Along with Director Prescott, and now as Director Prescott comes up. This is an annual, uh, plan that's approved and it's taken a little bit of time because there was a significant. Uh, legislative move a year ago, uh, which put into place an additional assessment or screening. Um, period, and so we've been working on that and, and, uh, we're ready now to bring forward, here's the plan, here's where we are. Um, at this point, so.
So the update today, there's really two, if you go to the next slide. Um, one is explaining the legislative change, and as documental said, it's really the addition of an additional screener. Uh, that needed to happen between grades three and six. Um, and then I have the newly qualified data, a number of students who are newly qualified for services for next year to share. Um, pending appeals, um, appeals are still in process and won't be finalized until next week. So legislative change is that students must be universally screened once entered before second grade and again, once entered before sixth grade. Uh, we exceed that expectation, because we now have three points of time where we universally screen. In kindergarten, we universally screen for primary enrichment services, in grade two, we screen, um, for high cap services. And now we have a new screen in place for, uh, fifth graders as they transition to middle school for next year. So that's the one, it is new and established and implemented this year.
I see that it's must, is that unless, uh, parents decline?
Yes, so we, we offer it to everybody, we do it during the school day, um, it is part of what we do. We, we, our schools work for makeups and things like that. Um, outside of the universal screening in grades one, three, four, six through eleven, students could opt to test. Um, and that probably happens after school, um, but universally means we do everything in our power to ensure that every student has access to be screened and participate.
And do they know that it's, I mean, I just know there's a lot of, even for the second graders, a tremendous amount of anxiety. Is that, I mean, is that still present? Or it's done without them really knowing?
Uh, I mean, they, they know it, the teachers talk about it, they send home notices to families. Um, they spread it out over many days, um, trying to make it, and they'll do two or three subtests, so maybe thirty minutes of testing a day. Over a number of days, they don't block out, you know, all of Monday will be testing, all of Tuesday will be testing, work finished, it usually spans almost two weeks.
Right, did I say other?
Yeah, um, this is the screening in, oh, read six plus, not five plus, nevermind, okay.
The, the math screening for like, it's getting into different math tracks that happens in, at the end of fifth grade, that's separate from this process.
It is, so. Yep, so that's math pathways.
Yeah.
Um, we have accelerated services in math, um, and because math is such a, such a great interest in our community, um, and our students excel in that area. Um, we have different opportunities so that it's not just students who receive high cap services who are eligible for accelerated math. They can, uh, complete math proficiency testing for different placements, we also added the, um, compacted course in middle school. So students can do two courses in a year, um, try to provide opportunities for them, but yes, that is separate from the school. And that's why, uh, as I explained, what we use as the screener for fifth grade, um, it doesn't include math. Because fifth graders will have the opportunity if they want to pursue other math avenues.
So, so a good question there, so on the other one is lost, but on the math is, uh, up in or is lost too?
Uh, math is optional. Um, so because they don't have to complete any testing in order to enroll in an accelerated course in middle school. So you can choose to take math two, or you could choose to take math two-three. But you don't have to do, complete any testing if you wanna go into the compacted course. So it's open to anybody, much like the high school model where a student can choose to select an honors course versus a regular course. It's just, you don't have to apply or reach a certain score to be eligible to enroll in that.
For the math screeners, is there any thought in changing the percentage requirements? I mean, how do we know that we haven't set the screener too high? Um, I mean, I guess, we would know to some extent perhaps if we set it too low, so I guess the first question is. You know, are we having people that are struggling that have tested in to the accelerated, more accelerated? And then two, like, I mean, is there thoughts on perhaps, like, maybe we set the bar too high?
So I wanna make sure we separate two things, right, and I can answer math pathways questions in it, like, in a separate time. But high cap is what we're talking about now and high cap as a screener, are you asking me about the high cap screener for math in grade two? Or are you asking about math pathways?
Well, because we started talking about pathways and sort of, I mean, I thought that we were going in that direction, but if you wanna stay.
That would be minimal.
Okay, if you wanna like, I mean, just limiting to high cap and keeping it to screening rather than, but I mean, you asked about the substance, like, once you've been screened in. Um, do we still do the Torrance test for creativity, that, that one-off like test, that's not, like, no other test, like, have that? Like, we still include the creativity test?
Uh, yep, so that is part of our, um, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. And we administer it as part of high cap identification, with the exception of the fifth grade universal screen and the kindergarten universal screen.
And we, and it still seems that that test doesn't seem to have much correlation with performance for the other two tests. I mean, one can make, well, one will of that fact, whether it's because that creativity is independent or if it's just, you know.
Well, it, it's still used as a help only, not a hurt.
Yeah.
So it can only help a student's chances and, and percentages, it can, it's not used against a student at all, so. Um, but still goes into the composite.
Right, I mean, like, you have to get a certain number of points and you get points, I mean, you could get zero points, I guess, from the Torrance test and some hypothetical universe. Do amazing in the others and maybe like still get enough absolutely.
And many, many students do, uh, the Torrance really is there as a help. Uh, so, and it, and it, I'll definitely provide some points in the matrix for students who perhaps are really out of the box thinkers. But maybe not, you know, score in the ninety-seventh percentile in, uh, a reading or math assessment. But they're very creative thinkers and so they might need something different. So remember that in the matrix for high cap, and I know I'm birdwalking a little bit, but we'll come back to this. Uh, in the matrix for high cap identification for grades two through five, um, students have multiple opportunities to qualify for services. And you'll see the numbers in a little bit where it shows there's the holistic qualifications of code thirty-three. Then there, that's for students who are in homogenous classes, then students can qualify in one domain or another or both in either reading or math. And then additionally, there are only point values add for science and the Torrance. So looking at holistically, students who perform well across all domains. Um, might need something different than those who excel in a given subject. And so the matrix tries to accomplish that by awarding points, um, and qualifying students in specific domains and collectively. Um, and we've got students to qualify in both arenas. So if we go.
One thing as we transition, um, to your question about where the bar is. Because we're in our first year of doing that, I think it's too early to tell, but it will be something that we have talked about looking at. To say, what does that look like, um, in terms of our assessments and how students are doing? So we're in year one of really working out, so we'll know more, um, but we're always looking. I think that's what you were asking about that.
So K and two are, were our, our, um, universal screeners previously. Um, in kindergarten, all students took the COGAT screener, so there's three subtests there. Uh, there's the verbal, non-verbal and quantitative, students who scored within the ninety-seventh percentile or higher, uh, in their composite score. Then went to a portfolio review process, as part of that portfolio review, our students complete Iowa math assessments. The, their teachers completed gifted rating scale, uh, we look at their I-ready scores, we look at their coursework, their classwork. Um, and really look at a portfolio of a student for identification purposes. In grade two, students take the full COGAT battery. So each of those subtests, whereas in kindergarten, there are one brief test in each of those areas. Areas for the full battery, there are three subtests in verbal, non-verbal and quantitative. Additionally, students, all, all students take that, all students take the Iowa math, one math, two computation, science, reading one, reading two. And then the Torrance test, so all students who tested second grade take all eighteen tests. Um, really to paint a whole picture of a student, trying to get as much information as we can to ensure that we're not perseverating. Or focusing just in one area or one area deficit, that really is looking at the whole student, um, and, and how they perform. Then in grade five, as, uh, we met this year with a group of teachers, coaches, administrators. Uh, the number one thing that we did not wanna do, even because we had to add another identification screener, um, was more tests. Uh, our students, you know, in grade two, take eighteen tests, they also take three diagnostic assessments in I-ready. For math and reading every year, um, they take the SBA, and they take the WCATS in elementary school. They, um, have tests of other classroom basis, uh, assessment and things that they do. And we didn't really feel like it was necessary to get more data, we have so much data profile on a student, especially one who's come through our system. By the time they reach fifth grade, we felt like we could capture things that were already done and look at scores. And triangulate some data to determine, uh, the screener was really about students who hadn't previously been identified, right? So they weren't identified in grade two, if they opted in grades three or four to test for high cap. Uh, they weren't identified there or through an appeals process, it's one more time making sure that as they head up to sixth grade. Um, we've identified all the students who might need something more. So we, we decided, we looked at the SBA and again, math is to the side. Uh, because math is not part of the high cap programming at the high school, that's part of our accelerated math pathways, so that's still to the side. So we looked at SBA, um, you know, seventy-four percent of all of our students, uh. In this year's fifth grade class, scored at a level four on the SBA ELA last year. So we had to then set a number and say, okay, well, we're gonna look at the top fifty percent of students who scored the level four, right? Then we looked at I-ready diagnostics and we were looking for, we, we looked at what would be a reasonable cut. Um, based on how all of our students performed and really it was students who were performing two grade levels or more above. Then we looked at the standards-based report card for science, because they won't take the WCATS science assessment until this spring. And the results won't be available until August or September, which is too late to make a determination. But we said, okay, when students consistently meet or exceeds, meet or exceed grade level standards. And all three of those things align, then, and they are not previously, um, identified as needing high cap services. Then those students would be screened into services, because the services provided in middle school for high cap. Are LA, social studies and science. So it's ensuring strong reading skills, um, and science skills to be able to go into those high cap classes. So that's the screener then that we implemented this year. And if you go to the next slide, Andrew.
Last one for questions, are the fifth grade teachers aware of the CED? I mean, requirement, I just don't know. What, what I worry about with that is if there's some teachers that tend to give more scenes than, I don't even know what their scale is right now. But, you know, I mean, some people love the good ones and some people rarely give them, one being like a high thing. So are they aware that if they feel like there's a kid that needs to be screened, that that's an important? Benchmark?
No, but I would say almost exclusively, every kid that I, I screen them, um, almost.
If they reach, if they have the other two, then.
They, they have the C. If you go to the next slide, Andrew. Um, additional information is part of the process, um, students in grade two who qualified for primary enrichment services. But do, who do not qualify automatically based on their high cap matrix scores, um, are reviewed prior to results being communicated. So if a student qualifies in, say, kindergarten or first grade to receive primary enrichment services. But in grade two, they do not qualify for services, high cap services. Um, they're automatically triggered into, it's not an appeal, because they haven't received the results. But I, we automatically go in and look at what were their scores, what were their I-ready scores, how are they performing in their classes? What might account for the discrepancy, um, to ensure we didn't miss something? Additionally, the multidisciplinary committee reviews all students' scores, um, in all grade levels. In addition to other data points to determine additional students for eligibility. Um, within this process, we pull up the indicators, not student names, but we pull up indicators for students who receive, um, multi-language development. Uh, five oh fours, sped qualifications, McKinney-Bento, um, because we wanna ensure that we might need, if a student is, you know, perhaps not scoring. As high as peers, but this is their second or third language, then there's gonna be more leniency in looking at those language scores and saying, okay, well. The language score is still incredibly high as a second or third language. So we, we're not gonna penalize them for learning a, a second or third language, their skills are there, the cognitive ability is there. We just need to spool up some of the English development. So the NBC reviews that, and then, um, there's a third level, which is appeals. So, um, we have gone through the first two pieces and now we're at the review stage. And I wanna say we have, um, of the students who did not qualify, I think I have thirty-seven, um, appeals. Uh, waiting, uh, across all grades. So newly qualified students for, uh, next school year, so these will be their grades for next year. So, um, students receiving holistic or code thirty-three, they're in a separate classroom housed at Lake Bridge. We have twenty-nine students who have currently qualified. Students who separate from that, uh, are receiving specifically services in math, remaining at their neighborhood schools. In their general education classroom, that's forty-seven. Um, seven students who will be receiving, uh, reading services. Six students who qualified in both reading and math, but not holistically. And so our total newly qualified, uh, number of students is eighty-nine. Uh, for next year's third grade, um, of the students who, so, uh, two hundred and seventy-four students tested. Um, in grade four, we had twenty-eight total students test and we've got eighteen newly identified students. And in grade five, we had twenty students test, um, and thirteen new quali- thirteen new qualified. Uh, moving into sixth grade, because the, the process is different, we have, we have a few students who still wanted to test in the old system. So they did that, um, but between those students and the secondary, the new screener. We have twenty-two students who were newly identified as rising sixth graders. So we go to the next slide. This just gives an idea of the percentage of our population that will be receiving high cap services next year. Um, next year, sixth graders, we were at twenty-seven percent. In, uh, grade five, it'll be thirty-seven percent, grade four, thirty-three, and grade three, thirty-two percent. Um, if you remember the, the slide that Kay put up, that talked about, uh, how much funding we receive specifically for high cap. It's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars next year. Um, and so when you think about like a third of our population, um, in grades three through essentially eight. Um, are qualifying for high cap services, we have, that, that hundred and thirty-six thousand is for like the assessments, the scoring. Um, and some of our. Um, and some of our uh special curriculum that we use. Um, there's very little left, so I think sometimes people have a misnomer. It is part of basic ed, we allocate funds accordingly. Um, but there's not some big pie in the sky because a student qualifies for High Cap, there is no additional special funding source for them. Um, and we don't have other people available to support that work, that the those people that those funds are allocated. Um, into our schools and we're doing the best we can to support um a variety of learners. We we definitely have a population of students who um are highly achieving, whose families support their their educational needs and. Um, I think that's evidenced by having a third of all students qualify for services.
I just, I say this every time and I'll just keep saying. Yeah, I'm just playing like, I think to communicate to parents, especially like. Parents who aren't English speakers, like, you know, parents who are new to the schools, parents who are new to public school, just be so great to have a cashier.
Like during fall thirty two and thirty three actually is a.
Okay, that's even worse. Video game, it's like. It's like, yeah, so I'm just like, it was like, I'm looking, there's math, there's reading, there's combined, like, couldn't be like red and blue and then the combined group is purple. You know what I mean? Like just something to make it more. Anyway, I say it every time. Otherwise, thinking is very helpful.
So this is all about screening, but are we gonna do anything about the substance once you get in? Because I mean, the crux. From any sort of, I mean, my perspective being on the school board, I mean, but also legally is provide an accelerated learning and enhanced instruction. Um, and if not today, when are we going to discuss? What that looks like at the middle school level, at the elementary level, at the high school level, because there are courses, we can look at the course catalog. And I think that's more, whether it's efficient or not, it's more concrete as to what those accelerated learning. Enhanced instruction opportunities are. What what are the elementary though and middle school, once you select the day?
Yeah, and I I think as we talked about during agenda planning, Director Glowitz, you know, the. For a lot of the purposes of the grant and what we do with the I grant, it's not. As much about, I think, the conversation that you're hoping to have. And so. I turn to you as a board to say, you know, I think you asked a great question, when might that happen? And I I think that would be a conversation we could have as a board. You could have as a board, I could join in as superintendent of when you would want to make that happen. You do have O E uh ten. Um, which are the reviews that we do. Um, we have a number of them that we've been doing and you'll get an update at that at your next board meeting. And then we have a whole nother calendar year, and if that's an interest of the board, um, then we can work on that. If it's a study session. I'd love to have, if we were to do that, I'd love to have coaches and uh teachers and. And others to come along for that conversation, but um, you know, that substance conversation, I think is a a bigger one. For you to agenda or put on an agenda for us.
I'm here just as an observation and is tied to when is the right time. I also see that this third, it is kind of the the last end of COVID kits that we're in in. So I'm curious how the next two years, if we will have an increase of demand or not, and if that is. Do we actually, is it the whole program that we need to change or is it from the High Cap or power we're gonna adjust? If the demand is higher depending on what is coming and and I think this is just, and it's something that we will have to just wait until to see.
Well, I think um. As the E E S data starts coming in too, and you know, we lean into the questions. For our students and our families and our and our faculty around. Rigor and relevance and and those paying close attention to what are the perceptions and. That might warrant um. Moving forward on something that you've talked about as a. As this board as well as the previous boards, and that is um, might it be time to look across um. Our programs, whether or not that's six twelve or that's a K eight, but to look at, you know, are we offering. The most relevant and and rigorous opportunities for our students, um, whether or not that is um through. Honors and A P s and whether or not that's through um accelerated math. And what does that look like for other school districts too? So that is certainly something on my mind, it's on our minds. Um, as we start thinking about the future um of our school district. And I think you pointed to the one that the board did, perhaps was it the late nineties, early two thousands? When they did a a kind of a seminal study as well back then.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's mainly, you know, comprehensively, it's sort of a new era of open enrollment, we need to. In terms of narrowly, and I know my view may diverge from others on this board. Um, I think the requirement for the annual approval of the highly capable plan. Um, is presenting evidence of what the plan is. And to me, the highly capable plan, I mean, what we are entrusted to carry out. Is the legislator finds that for highly capable students, access to accelerated learning and enhanced instruction is access to a basic education. Um, so I I I don't think it's in terms of to approve that. I need information showing how we're providing accelerated learning and enhanced instruction. Um, so that's my thinking when it comes to. I think it needs to be presented with approval of the plan um to understand how we're providing that access.
What we're requested to provide from the state is what is presented in there, like those are the questions and that that is.
Well, that's the grant.
Right, and that, well, that that is the the plan, that is what they ask for.
I don't think it defines the plan. I mean, there's an application process, but for the purposes of the grant, receiving the grant and the approval. For that, this is what they passed of us as a school district this year.
And sometimes they do, you you know, perhaps a, you know, they have what they call consolidated program review. Covid has changed the. I think the cadence of that, and so we haven't been under that, but when we go through that, then there is a more rigorous piece from the state. In terms of what we're bringing to you is these are the. Forms that we have to fill out for the state to approve our grant, and so.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying. I I'm just saying that.
With your statement that you're putting words in other board directives about, so if you in terms of that other people disagree with what you said. When I don't think anyone's commented on anything that you just said. So I would ask you in the future to speak for yourself and not comment on what other people.
I'm speaking for myself.
Right, but your statement was about what other people do and think and. Usually incorrect, so please be more careful on that. Um, uh. Is it on this?
It's about what, yeah, it's it's on this topic.
Right.
Yeah, no, I just was gonna say. I I kind of see where Dan's coming from in the sense that, like, when I saw this come up on the agenda, I was like, oh, widdy, we get to learn about the High Cap program. And I was like, oh, this is just like the state application thing and then the specifics of how we're screening and so so. So I don't know if it's possible, we just give it a different name for the sake of the public as well, if people are looking at the agenda, it's really High Cap, you know, like. State guidelines, program outline or something, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Which is also why they started uh with. You want more of a program review, and then that's up to the board to direct.
Which is a separate, I'm I'm saying, I I agree with that, that's a completely separate thing, I'm just saying, if we maybe this be titled slightly differently, would make it very clear that what we're doing. Sorry.
That was, I wanted to know if it was like direct.
Yeah, I should have put a question about like, what language is used to like the second graders and the parents? Because I remember when I was going through it, it was like, seemed like there was always people like, oh, like you're smarter than that class, but. It's not necessarily smaller smarter, but like a different type of learning. And like, I was in it, but I don't know if it was the best fit for me and I just want like, I just want to know like what language it uses.
Um, I mean, we we talk a lot just about meeting student needs. So like some students need um. More time with things, some students need more resources, some some students need to learn in a different environment, some students need. Um, extra support in certain areas. Um, so we don't talk, uh, that's part of the. Uh, and I know Ameri- uh, Maggie Tights, it stands out in my mind every time, like as I was making the slides, I was like, oh, Maggie Tye is gonna see code thirty two, code thirty three. Um, but that's part of why it doesn't have like a nifty name. So that kids are like, are you, are you a unicorn or are you a dinosaur? Right? Like, I'm a unicorn, so I'm super special and you're a dinosaur, so you don't have as many skills as me. Um, but we. Try to make it very like, the the language of the coding is actually what the internal system, like what the state records it as. Um, so it's not super fancy or glorified, trying not to put labels. On kiddos, they're already there, right? Like families know whether or not a student is receiving services or not. Um, but just like we we don't say like, oh, you're an A D H V kid, we don't say you're a smart kid. Right? We we try to say like, oh, you're a student who um is really active and you're a student who loves academics and you like. They are people first and then their attributes are are secondary, they're not, they're not those attributes. Um, I can't say it's perfect, um, but we definitely try to talk about. Just student needs and and how we learn, not about um. You know, because that came up in that twenty eighteen review, like students' perceptions of like the smart kids and the dumb kids. And that's a hundred percent not what it's about. Some students need different accelerations or different access points than others. Um, and it has nothing to do with being smart or dumb.
I, what what would really, I mean. I hear you that thirty two and thirty three is hard, but you know, having having gone through the system where it was E two, then High Cap, then. Then thirty three, and it could be that I'm out of the elementary school scene, so so you know, I could be way way off base, but. Um, but I think that that part of it is is hugely important because we um. You know, with with the E two and then the the High Cap and then, I mean, with the name changes, it's it's the students, it's. The ones, the ones that are in it in terms of, I mean, it's so often in that, in that review that we did. Six years ago now, um, it was, uh, I can't be friends with you because you're not in High Cap. And so, and it's, and it was, Asha can speak to it, I mean, it was a huge issue at the time, I don't know if it's still an issue. I don't hear as much talk about it, but like I said, it could be just because I'm removed from it. What would be really helpful to me and what I always um. Have wondered with the services is um. You know, we know that every student has different needs, every student, um, and one, one student who qualifies for thirty three. It's gonna have different needs than another student who qualifies for thirty three. So, and I know one of the reasons, at least in that time period. Asha's time period, um, you know, a lot of parents wanted their kids in the program because it was project based learning, it was seen as some of the better teachers. It was, I mean, it was bigger classes, but um, you know, it was, it was some of the things that that. That, and then one of the reasons, one of the reasons why. It was, um, you know, as we went to neighborhood schools and and there were, there were lots of reasons, but but. Doing the gen ed and services in the classroom is that we know that there's models that are best for all students, right? And so, and and as we get to inclusionary practices, so so meeting the needs of all students in all classrooms and it breaks down the barriers, so. I'm. Wondering, um, you know, what I would love to be looking at is, is and hearing from coaches and teachers who are doing it is. How are they meeting those needs and how are they different in? Um, the classes where either the specifically code thirty three classes, which I guess only one, right? And then um, and then are are the the code thirty two kids, you know, I mean. I hate just looking at test scores, but you know, I mean, I'm, we're just 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 having a really um. Meaningful talk about, you know, the education process. What are they actually receiving? Are they are they really truly receiving different types of learning? Um, then, um, you know, because we're hoping now with inclusion that that kids can all be. You know, at where they would access whatever learning they want to be able to access. So I mean, whether we call it accelerated or or decelerated, so um. I want to know like how is, you know, code thirty three class, is it actually being taught differently? Are they using different tools or curriculum than the other class?
And so that will be part of, I think, what Director Glowitz was asking, and that is a more comprehensive overview of the program and um. And analysis.
Yeah, and I think this is a great time after what two thousand eighteen was the review and then put into place in. Twenty twenty one, twenty, and then changes with the criteria, so I think it's a great time to do a, you know, understanding that it's. You know, it hasn't been that long since there's been changes, but also adding in the inclusionary practices, I think it's um. You know, prudent to not wait ten years to look at and see, see if we're noticing things, if there's areas we can improve and. And what we can make sure that we're providing all students um with the tools that we know are best for them. I'm seeing nods. Is that kind of? Okay, um, and whether we do it, well, we're certainly not doing it this spring. Um, I would think.
Yeah, I will talk to learning services because I need to look at twenty ninety as well to see what other reviews we have and all of the other things, and then we can come back.
My my only question is just, um, is it, is it maybe part of the discussion of like inclusion? In the classroom, like, so it's not just about High Cap, right? It's about just the whole picture, it's really.
I mean, I think, I think it kind of is. With code thirty two, I think that's really kind of the, of the, correct me if I'm wrong, it's really the objective standard. I can't remember which. Thirty two is the gen ed classroom and getting services. And that's the whole concept of inclusion, is that you're provided whatever services you need to bring your best. And so. It's, you don't have to be in a special siloed, you can only talk to these kids classroom in order to receive the educational services that. You need to achieve your best.
Yeah.
So I I mean, it's, that's the, I would say, the more accelerated part of inclusion, but there's also. You know, the tools to, you know, where where kids have gaps and and might need to slow down on something too.
And, you know, we're, we have an interesting opportunity, you met uh Melissa this evening and, you know, as we. End to the point of inclusion and we always look at learning services. Not as technology, separate from gen ed, separate from High Cap, it's all together. We have an opportunity to maybe look at that, where are we now? And then where are we going in the next one, three and five years? So we'll go back to learning services and put down those conversations and come back.
In two thousand eight, the High Cap and sped reviews were at the same time.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, if you would like to this evening, um, you could take action on this with a motion and. And a second to approve the High Cap program plan, it could be put on. Your consent agenda at the next meeting, it could be brought back.
It has to be done before the end of June.
Before the end of September.
And I would just point out that in the email and in the big work that we got with the forms, I mean, it says twenty twenty three, twenty four. Highly capable program plan form one of three, I assume that's the form from the state.
Yes.
There's four, there's.
I understand your point, right? But that is what the form is called.
Yeah.
And and that's what we're being asked to approve.
Yeah. I hope that we vote tonight to approve uh the twenty twenty three, twenty. Twenty twenty three to twenty four High Cap program plan. Second.
Any further discussion?
All in.
What? Just changing the name for Maggie Tye. No, 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 it understood, it understood what the concern is. Um, I know that that's really a basis to abstain or um. Or say nay because it's what the state's asking for and it all we're voting on, we're not voting on whether or not we're doing the best. Providing the best services that we can be.
Yeah.
That's not what this vote is on. So all in favor um of approving the twenty twenty three, twenty four. Highly capable program plan as given by the forms from this stage. Indicate by saying aye, uh, student?
Aye.
And board? Any abstentions? Any nays? Uh, so we have one zero four one. Do you want to see them testing more? Is that the reason for the nay?
I want to see the substance of why accelerated learning and enhanced instruction is in the classroom. To me, that's a plan.
Okay. Um. Thank you. Uh, board policy eighteen hundred O E nine, communication and support to the board's summer school health and P E update.
So we're leaving uh Director Prescott up here. Um, one of the things that was delayed. Because of COVID was our review of our summer school um model and specifically. Looking at our P E and health um programming. It's been something that ever since I arrived in the district office and there were a couple summers that I worked on. Uh, or was kind of the summer school, high school um person. You know, trying to look at, are we offering the best? And so Jamie uh, and her team uh, started looking at what are the different options uh, for that. So I will turn it over to you, Director Prescott.
Hold on. Okay, so this year there were a number of different um, reviews that we undertook, um, two of them being summer school and six-ful P E. Um, additionally, there were some science, um, some A L E, my online, um, crest. So there were a variety of things at play. Uh, summer school and six-ful P E had a lot of crossover. And so, uh, I am presenting those together. If you go to the next line. So, why review, uh, my online, which I'm not talking about today, um, P E and health and M I H S summer school. So, pre-COVID, um, a student could have, have up to fifty percent of their course work completed online. Um, their, their courses. So they could have, in a seven-period day, they could have three periods online, but they couldn't have four periods online. Um, they were primarily an in-person student. Um, we had in-person summer school. We didn't have online summer school. Um, and we were pretty flexible with endorsements. Um, teachers would teach out of endorsement in summer school because there's not basic ed funding attached, attached to it, so we didn't have reporting. So it was basically whoever was available and interested could teach summer school. During COVID, we went a hundred percent online. So we applied, um, I don't know how many of you were on the board at the time, but we applied to the state and were approved as a full-time online provider. Um, that was largely because we had some students, especially in the primary grades, like kindergarten and first grade, who wanted to do what we called Red Remote Online. So that was uh, where teachers were fully remote online with students fully remote online. Um, and there was never an attempt to bring them back in through hybrid or anything like that. So, we became a full-time online provider during COVID. Um, students could take a hundred percent of their courses online. So a high school student could take six or seven periods of online courses uh, during COVID. Um, for personal reasons, medical reasons, et cetera. And we had a remote summer school because we were not meeting in person. Um, the focus was really on getting students graduated. So, um, you know, courses like P E or health where previously it had required some in-person contact and getting together. When we couldn't do that, our option was completely remote. Um, and we didn't want any course, even if it was a challenging course to do online, to hold a student up from graduating. So we were trying to get through the students through the system to move on with our next phase. Um, we were ultra flexible. We tried hybrid. Um, so once we, once COVID was effectively over and we had returned to in-person, we tried hybrid where there was some remote, some in-person, uh, and that still just didn't meet the need or intent of summer school trying to provide um, services and support and instruction for students. So post-COVID, um, the renewal of online, we did not renew to be a full-time uh, online provider. We've gone back to our, we've sunset at the end of the school year, our ability to provide full-time online. Um, we've determined that we are an in-person school district. Um, we value that. There are some districts that do have full-time online enrollment. Um, and we're just not one of them. Um, there are new required standards. So for uh, specifically in health class, the state came up with out with some new standards that need to be taught. Um, so that is post-COVID. Um, we are working to align standards and expectations in all courses. Um, specifically at the high school, that is one of the things the admin team is working on, is getting like courses to have like expectations. Um, we are committed to having teachers in endorsement areas. Um, like we do during the school year, we do everything we can to try to ensure that the stu-, the teachers who are teaching students in a content area uh, are endorsed to do so. Um, and we have a return to in-person summer school. Um, you know, we went, we went online, we tried hybrid and remote um, because of COVID and given that scenario. Um, but in the post-COVID era, uh, we do believe in the value of in-person learning. You know, during the school year, we're an in-person institution. Um, and we want to be that as such in the summer. So, banks of the river in going into these conversations uh, for P E and summer school. Um, there were a few banks of the river. Those were, were an in-person learning institution. Um, both health and P E needed to be offered during summer school to allow for students who desired flexibility in their course scheduling during the academic year. We heard that loud and clear um, through student and parent surveys that the reason that summer school offerings specifically in health and P E were important is because students wanted to be able to take up to seven courses during the regular school year. They didn't want to be limited in say, being able to take language and band and another uh, area of interest or doubling up in science or something like that. They wanted to have the freedom in their schedules to allow for that. So we said that was a, a bank of the river, right? We keep, an option is not to say, we just are not gonna offer P E and health in the summer. Um, and that the I M S P E waiver, so in this process, I know I'm talking about summer school and P E health, but it, it's in my mind, there's so much overlap. Um, that an option going into the discussions about um, P E and health was that the current or the now uh, waiver at the middle school for P E uh, couldn't go away, that there's still need to be an option for students. Um, as outlined in state law, that, that students can wave out of it for um, three specific reasons and that that option wasn't going away. We couldn't say, no, every student's gonna take P E for a trimester, all three years of middle school. So, these are, are banks.
What are those? Do you know three exceptions?
Sure, it's religious, um, health, and because you're in another activity, a directed activity. Um.
And one of the things about P E, um, not a lot of districts have the P E waiver option to the extent that we do, but we have consistently heard from families that in a six-period day, if you wanna take a language and you wanna take um, fine arts or, or whatnot, then you need that flexibility. So there is still, you know, there's, there's still health in a, in a P E piece of middle school, but that's been important to our community.
So, the process, um, each of these groups had a team. Uh, there was one team per review. There were nine to fourteen staff members on each of the review teams. Um, that included admin, counselors, teachers, coaches. Um, we met monthly. We've been meeting monthly since October. Uh, we had a joint meeting in April, finally bringing the P E health people with the summer school people to talk about the things that we had in common and the, um, where people were landing with, with where we, we're gonna move forward with the two programs. Uh, we identified the issues, determined how to gather input and feedback, reviewed data, collaborated, really reached consensus on final decisions. Uh, we looked in each of the reviews at five to six comparable districts. Um, and consistently, M I S D offered, offers more opportunity and flexibility than every other district. So we looked at districts that were comparable in size, a single high school district. We looked at those that we had multiple comprehensive high schools. Uh, and across the board, um, we, we consistently offer more opportunity and more flexibility than anywhere else. Um, feedback and input that we gathered were student surveys, parent surveys. Um, we hosted a webinar specifically about uh, summer school, P E health opportunities and um, wanting to reiterate that those options were still gonna be available. We just didn't know what they were gonna look like. Uh, we involved athletic coaches, students, teachers, parents, um, gathering input and feedback along the way. So, let's take him with summer school. Uh, this is some of the student survey response data. So, um, percent of respondents, um, by grade level, uh, you can see that there. Don't need to say much about it. Let's say responded.
It's a beach ball.
How many respondents responded?
Oh, one ninety-eight.
One ninety-eight. Do I put that up?
Yeah, I'll leave Michael for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so one of the questions was, you know, why, why do you want, or the question was phrased something like, uh, if you have attended or participated in summer school, why did you participate? Um, if you're interested in attending summer school, like, why would you want to participate in summer school? Why, why, why would you choose summer school? Um, majority of the students said uh, flexibility in course schedule, so opening up that time, um, and to get ahead in grad requirements. You know, a few others were, you know, for credit recovery. Um, that's when a student attempts a course and either doesn't complete it or doesn't pass it. Um, you, you can see there's some students who were like, I had never planned to enroll in summer school. Um, some say it was easier, it, the courses were easier in summer school than um, during the school year. Uh, and others, we, there are a few courses that are offered during the summer that aren't offered during the school year. Um, specifically a philosophy and moral choices course, um, that appeals to some students. So, um, that's why they, they have chosen or would choose summer school.
And this is, you're specifically talking about what's offered by the high school of the poster running star.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's not, running star would be an alternative pathway to satisfy the same.
Running star, you can take anything that's offered.
Good, good, yeah.
And did the survey include directed athletics as one of the options of like, for all the students who are taking, getting P E credit for playing a sport? Or was the survey specifically just for summer school, like taking the P E class through the school?
It was specifically through summer, okay, through for summer. Um, so one of the questions uh, was because at the time, where we were in, at the time of the proposal or of the survey, um, the proposal on the table was um, for the health and P E classes to meet for three hours a day, three days a week. Uh, for the six weeks. And so, um, one of the questions was, you know, if this change occurs, would you still enroll in P E or health over the summer? If you had to go three days a week for three hours a day? Uh, and it was a pretty close uh, match of, you know, yes, I would still enroll and no, I would not enroll. Um, where we landed was two hours a day, three days a week for six weeks.
Did that change the yes and no?
Well, so the survey went out, we got that feedback, um, and then we modified and agreed to two hours a day for three days a week. Um, so they didn't have a chance to answer. We didn't go back to those same group. That's important and say, now would it change if it was less time?
Did they get to choose the days or are they assigned?
They're assigned uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Well, like from a state level, what's the sort of banks of the river in terms of like the flexibility that we have for hours? Like, I mean, just, I mean, he- hearing about it without going too much in the details, like, I, I mean, just sort of tend to be able. Like, if we decided to do fifteen minutes, can we do that? Is there any requirement in terms of just instructional time to the credit?
Like, it's, it's a little bit um, freelancing when it comes to summer school compared to the typical school year. Um, we, it's more about the covering the standards and the content than it is about the exact seat minutes. I think our, I think our health teacher would say that three hours a day, three days a week would be super helpful because that would get an extra, what, eighteen hours? Um, we've also said that you can miss up to three days during the summer, um, without impacting, you know, the learning there, which is a sixth of the school year, so like thirty, equivalent of like thirty days. So we, we, what we tried to do is be less about minutes and more about comparability of experience, but also remembering that after the six weeks, there's still another month of learning beyond that. That's asynchronous. That's where actually we're probably a little bit more asking for flexibility from the state because we don't, we, we put a lot into the asynchronous piece so that kids don't have to take all of summer school in seat time. You might, you can speak to it even better.
Yeah, I mean, even during the times where they are there for the six weeks, there are still some assignments and things that will need to be done at home. Um, because it's just, you'll see a slide later where we compare the, that number of seat time, like thirty-six hours in summer school is compared to like eighty-five during a regular semester. Um, which, you know, if, if the information is engaging and valuable and we say that it's important to cover eighty-five hours of time during the regular school year, you know, thirty-six hours is less than half of that. And so, we're really trying to maximize the time that we do have, but that does mean some content is left for some independent study outside of class time.
Oh, sure. Oh, you like? Take different times of the day. So you said it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Can I say like, oh, I wanna be in the morning or in the afternoon because?
Yes.
Okay.
So when you register, there's, there's two, uh, for classes like this, um, it, this is holds true for the English classes, social studies classes, math classes that we offer. Um, there's kind of two, two periods in the day. It's the morning period, like nine to eleven. Uh, and then there is an afternoon period from one to three. So, yeah, if you've got a morning commitment and you can make it for the afternoon, you can sign up for afternoon or vice versa. Uh, parent survey response data, uh, hundred and ninety-five responses. Um, their questions were slightly different because they've not taken summer school. They may have had students take summer school or want, desire that their students take it. Uh, so we asked them, like, from one to five, rate the importance of purpose for your student to attend summer school. So, um, in looking at that, the, the most responses were, the highest response rate was flexibility in course schedule, which aligned with the students, right? So making it accessible to students to take during the summer to open up their schedules during the school year. Um, a second for uh, parents as well as students were to get ahead in grad requirements. Um, and then followed by credit recovery, different courses and being easier. Uh, there's a, thank you. Uh, so, from a, a high school, summer school perspective, um, one of the reasons that summer school exists uh, is really the opportunity to provide students who need to recover credits in order to meet grad requirements. Um, you know, when you think back to like old school movies where, you know, students were like, had to do summer school because I didn't pass my history class or my English class. Um, we, we still have students, although we do have many students who excel and thrive and um, want to move through more content and more courses more quickly. Um, we do have students who, who need extra time, who need to recover credit. Something happened during the year and they need that time to um, stay on track or get on track, um, to meet those grad requirements. And so, when we say, um, you know, some students have priority over others in scheduling, um, we look at students who are credit deficient, who are enrolling in summer school. We look at rising seniors and current seniors who might be at risk of not graduating and needing to complete their credits in order to graduate high school. So, that's kind of the first priority tier of students we enroll in summer school. Uh, beyond that, it is an enrichment opportunity. So, um, we have some unique enrichment courses for students to pursue in areas of interest or hone skills and content knowledge during the summer months. So we've got a math-focused class where students can um, just hone their math skills. If they're not getting, uh, they, they can get a math uh, credit, but it's really about learning, keeping up on their skills. Um, and being ready because knowing that they have, you know, two and a half months with no math, if they've been challenged in math before, they're not learning all kinds of new content and getting a new credit for a new course. They're keeping those skills fresh the way start the school year again in September, um, they're ready to go. We also have, like I said, the moral choices and philosophy class. Um, Dino Anis has taught that for a long time. It's a, a funky course. It's operated like it meets eight to ten P M on different places on the island. It used to be all over the city of Seattle, but risk management had to bring that in a little bit. So it's just on um, island locations. Uh, but students have enjoyed that. And that's something that can't be offered during the school year, but, but they really enjoyed. He actually, last year offered two different sections because there were so many students interested. Um, and then it offers flexibility. So, um, there are a few great earning, credit-bearing courses analogous to courses offered during the school year. Um, that allows students to complete grad requirements so that they can have flexibility when letting their course schedules for the academic year.
And is there a cap for students?
They can take up to two classes.
But, but, but I, I also a cap of numbers too. So you said that, that priority goes according to uh, so like seniors and.
So, um, we can hire, so so, summer school's completely self-funded. So, the amount that a student pays for enrollment is what goes to pay staffing. Uh, so we have caps, um, just based on the number of teachers. Like, we have one health and one P E teacher available to teach. Um, based on our contract language, they could potentially each teach third degree students in each of those periods. So that would be sixty-six students for P E, sixty-six students for health. Um, beyond that, we have um, a math teacher, a his- a history teacher or a social studies teacher and an English teacher. Um, those classes typically run smaller, um, because they're only semester credits. They're often like, they're either creative writing or they're bolstering their skills or refreshing skills or doing credit recovery. Um, so those classes are generally smaller. Um, and then we do have a few courses that's, online courses that students can take that are just of interest, maybe forensics. We don't offer forensics. It's a semester-long course. Um, a student could take that online. So we do have a teacher who can help um, moderate the online courses. Um, we have had as many, like during COVID, we had up to like two hundred and eighty students enrolled in summer school. Um, I anticipate we'll probably have closer to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty this year. And then we, we hire staff accordingly. If we, if we have more student need, we can try to hire staff. I know our health and P E is gonna be challenging just because we, we have one health teacher and we've got uh, One health teacher and we've got uh one P E teacher available to teach. Uh, so some other summer school updates. Um, we overspent in summer school last year. Fortunately, we had a reserve. Um, from a year prior, um, but it's just expensive with staffing costs going up and premium going up. Um, the, the cost went up. So instead of being an eight to four schedule this coming year, we've reduced the hours and it's going to be nine to three. Um, trying to condense that a little bit and save on some stacking costs. Um, we've changed it so that only educators endorsement in subject area will teach the courses. So social studies teachers will teach social studies courses, English teachers will teach English courses, math, et cetera. Uh, we revised the online M I H S summer school course catalog to mirror the new high school course catalog. So it's available online. It's. All in digital formatting. We no longer print uh a booklet. Uh, the, the dates are listed there, uh, June twentieth to August first are those six weeks of in-person classes, Tuesday through Thursday. Um, and then the cost adjustment for online courses, uh, and I know this seems like a lot. A typical course for summer school is three hundred and seventy-five dollars. However. Um, three hundred and seventy-five dollars is what we have to pay for each student who takes an online course. So when we have to pay for an online course. Um, we actually lose money because we're paying for staff using other, other money from summer school. So, uh, we had to add the cost of the actual course to the summer school class. So. A regular summer school class in person is three seventy-five, but any, any online courses, um, they're just too expensive for us. We can't afford it.
Yeah, another question real quick. So why did you put the asynchronous uh separate than in person?
Uh, just to show that there is, there is a period of time that is in person. And then students have some independent work and assignments that they complete during August and they turn them in uh prior to the first day of school.
Okay.
So just showing there is a commitment from, from June to August, but only in person for six weeks. So if people wanted to go traveling, for example, they could do. There's no check-in or required uh attendance or anything from August second to the twenty eighth.
Independent kind of focused and finishes her work before.
Teachers still answer emails and things like that if students have questions, but they're not working three days a week like they are. Um, and students aren't, aren't expected to check in.
No, I had it. It was like on school G. So like there's a submission box each week for the asynchronous work. And so like they have like when you should be doing the asynchronous work, but it's not like they don't care if you turn it in late or not. Or even turn it off.
Yeah.
Do we have like um for any students who are like free and reduced lunch, like a waiver, um? The, the fees?
Ask them.
They get um. It, it just shows up as a zero for their, when they go through that portion, just, it's just zeroed out.
This, the student is taking summer school for credit recovery, especially when that leaves for graduation. Um. They're, they're still charged for the, the fee or is it, is it?
They are because we don't have a way to, to pay for this summer. That makes sense. Okay, so shifting gears from summer school to, to P E six twelve, although you're gonna still see some elements of summer school pop up. Uh, so one of the first things we tackled was the I M S P E labor. So. I don't recall if this was one of the groups that I spoke to, but um I spoke to a number of different groups. Talking about how fifty-two percent of all seventh and eighth graders waved out of um P E classes. This last year. So, um. It, all they had to do to wave out, some of them didn't even sign a form, um, some of them just scheduled other classes. Um, some just signed a form saying like, my student's not going to take P E and that was it. Uh, and that didn't align with state expectations. If the state says, yeah, a student can wave out, but. It needs to meet one of these three criteria. It's because they're doing directed athletics. It's because. They have a medical exemption or it's because they have a religious exemption. And so, um, we uh talked about banks of the river. We talked about, you know, and as you can imagine, they're divergent ideas and thinkers, right? Some people wanted students. Mandatory, like compulsory P E attendance and others wanted as much flexibility as possible. And we found a middle ground where. Um, the new waiver form, um, and I won't, we won't watch the video or, or open the form, but. The new form says you, you check one of those three boxes if you're choosing to waive your student out of P E in seventh, third grade. Um, which is the reason why. And if you're choosing the directed athletic one, then. Explain what it is, what activity is your student doing? Because the expectation is that they're still doing something, right? It's not that I'm just choosing not to do the P E. I am just, I'm getting that opportunity in a different way, um, and outlining what that is. So we did that. That was then implemented in time for their uh next year's registration. So. The P E staff did a little video explanation of the process and what the opportunities were. Uh, revised the form. Those forms have been submitted. It was part of the registration process. Um, and that, that part's rolling. Uh, and then we looked to tackle the high school. Uh, so the first, well, I might even say it's the first that we did. Uh, some of the key considerations. Um, in looking to make changes and trying to clarify things. Uh, we needed to clarify language and expectations for directed athletics credit. Um. It's been a number of years since we looked at directed athletics. Um, people, coaches, student athletes were unclear about what constituted directed athletics. Uh, is it just because you're on a team that says Mercer Island High School doesn't include club sports? Um, there was a big discussion a number of years ago about sports that weren't at the time W Y A A sports, water polo, lacrosse. Um, there's been the addition of badminton, but badminton uh meets uh different criteria, different times and duration than other athletic. Teams. So trying to clarify language and expectations for what does directed athletics look like? Uh, what bears credit and how does a coach know whether or not to, when, when they get the email that says, did this student earn the credit? If I'm a coach who's not an educator and I'm coming from the outside, how am I supposed to know? And so it was establishing criteria to say, this is what constitutes directed athletic credit. Um, we needed to align course expectations, especially post-COVID. One of those previous slides, I said, you know, we had gotten loose in our expectations and we needed to tighten those up. Especially with some of the new expectations coming from the states. We needed to provide continued flexibility to complete grad requirements during the summer and to open student schedules for the regular school year and scheduling. Um, and then, uh, the students have sixty-four possible semester course slots between ninth and twelfth grade. To complete one point five P E credits. And that was something that we talked about. Um, you know, as students are talking about how they need to double up and accelerate and they need to have access to all the electives that they want. Uh, one of the things that we paused was to say, okay. Assuming you take no high school credits prior to, to uh the end of your eighth grade year. There are sixty-four possible times to take the courses. And for P E, three of those sixty-four are expected from the state. Uh, so then, some of the work that we did, um, we. Established uh the criteria for directed athletics and they established three levels. So. Um, the first is W Y A A sports offered at the high school. So those that are approved by the high school. Um, that's, that constitutes directed athletic credit. Um, and you can earn, students can earn a P for pass. If they complete it. There's no letter grade associated. It doesn't go into the G P A. It's just a point five credit for each season they complete. Uh, and within this, uh, it does, if you click on the directed athletics, uh, Andrea's. Up above, it's actually linked. Um. It outlines uh what constitutes it. So, um. There's a governing body that uh W Y A A sports offered must confirm at least eighty-five percent participation for practices. Across the season via attendance record, submission via final forms. So in order to earn. D A credit by playing a W Y A A sport at Mercer Island High School, you've got to have eighty-five percent participation for the season. Section B, so these are non-W Y A A and club sports. Um, so things that I can think of that fall into this category right away would be water polo and lacrosse. Uh, so the criteria, does it have a dedicated season with a beginning and end date? Um, does the activity have a governing body? Does, do all practices and competition involve continuous moderate to vigorous physical activity? The activity needs to meet for a minimum of at least five times per week and two hours per day for a hundred hours. Coaches must confirm active participation in eighty-five percent of the season via attendance record. Um, requires ten consecutive weeks of practice competition. Uh, actively takes place during the school year and activity occurs outside of school time. So, groups can look at this and say, okay, yep, I, I can check these boxes. A coach can look at it and say. Yep, my, my group meets this or my group doesn't meet this. What might I need to change about my season? So an example I'll use is badminton. I know that badminton uh has a shortened season. Badminton could choose to say, okay, we're going to meet the requirement to, to earn the credit. Or you know what, we're going to ask for a special consideration and we're going to say the student participates in two badminton seasons. Gets the point five credit, right? So we can't, we can't come up with ten consecutive weeks based on gym availability and competition. But we could do five weeks in, you know, a student's freshman year and five weeks in a student's sophomore year. We'd let them to receive point five credit. We'll document that attendance over two years. So this gives coaches, student athletes, and other groups or activities an opportunity to say. Are we, are we eligible for directed athletic credit? These are the criteria. So that was something that was accomplished. And it was vetted through coaches and teachers and administrators. Um. We also, um, went through the, the high school academic and summer school P E courses. So. Um, they, those both link to the descriptions of the P E courses offered. All courses listed under the M I H S P E courses ca- count towards the point five credits or are point five credits. And count towards the in-person P E grad requirement and include a letter grade. So we used to have a summer school P E option where it was just a P. It didn't count towards the in-person. And you, students still had to take in-person P E or they did directed athletics. And you could get up to one point O credits of directed athletics, but they still have this outstanding point five P E credit that they had to take in person. So the way that summer school P E has been re-envisioned is that it now counts for that in-person P E credit. Because there is face-to-face time, quote unquote, seat time, um, because all the standards will be taught within that course. Um, it now is awarded in-person P E credit. So a student can essentially take summer school P E. And, and then do a one point O directed athletics during the course of their four years. They could take summer school P E. Three consecutive summers and get one point five P E credits and never have to take P during the academic year.
Is the summer school, is that graded or is that also like, um?
It's a letter grade.
So that would, okay.
And that's a letter.
It's a letter grade, so it goes into the G P A.
Can they take it past?
They can choose to take a pass fail. Um.
Does that answer? Would, would it be reflected as the same as those that do directed athletics? But for the directed athletics, does it show up? Is it pass fail or is it just? So it would show up in the same way as a P. Yeah, if, like, someone was worried about a, a grade and, okay, yeah.
Or we have some students who, I think they'd really like the.
Yeah, no, yeah, no.
So they can take it that way, which wasn't the case before. That's a nice addition of what this will be like.
You explain to me how you got to sixty-four?
Sure, um, seven periods. Two semesters, so fourteen, and then rising ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. You have the ability to take two uh point five courses in each of those.
During summer.
But you can't take two P E classes. Well, you can take P E twice.
You can make summer, in the same summer, yeah.
Well, just the slots.
Slots.
Total slots.
Got it. Okay. All right. No, 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 it's just, it's just semantics that I'm like, wait, I, how did you get there? But, okay. Um, and just, uh, I don't know if you're gonna get to this. I don't want to jump the gun. Um, you know, I know the, um. There's been a big, uh. There's been a lot of resistance by, by high school staff to. Uh. Not allow kids to take seven classes, but especially freshman year to, to really avoid taking seven. People can. But, but there's that question. My understanding is that is, is weakening. If that's. And in part because of this and.
Uh, uh, yeah, and I think just what the students are saying in terms of what they want to take, you know. You know, part of the levy when we talk to our families has been, we have a seven period day. And so I think if the school year were to start tomorrow. And no one dropped any classes, we'd have more freshmen in particular taking seven periods than we. Have this year or last year or whatnot. So we're continuing to try to think about that. We also have conversations with students around. You know. Uh, you know, the pros and cons to that. And, and some I think are choosing to do. Six periods the first semester and then add a. A health the second semester once they're feeling, and then that's their seven. So they still don't take fourteen total semesters. They take thirteen, but they still.
The students know, I mean, this is just kind of one of those things that you learn, like signing up for running star, especially in the summer is a pain. And it is not self-explanatory and, um, you know, getting everything signed and all that and then dealing with. What do we call it? Trust me, the hassle. Um, and. Um. But are, are students counseled on the benefits of doing running start? And, and I say this not, you know, because it's not taking funding away from our school, um, but, but, uh, you know. I, I think a lack of understanding is that the, the, the quarter, uh, because it's a college course. It's a whole year's worth of high school credits. And, um, you know, especially.
For some of them.
For some of them, so the more academic is that.
Yeah, some courses require two quarters to equal one uh credit, so it depends on the one.
Okay.
Mo- a lot of them are the one quarter is one credit, but there are some where you have to take two.
Okay, but a lot, but, but there are those opportunities for students to be able to open up their schedules. And then, uh, hopefully as our counseling office gets more stable. Over the years, as, as I think it still is, right? Um, that, that somehow there'll be a little bit more guidance in signing up for the running star too, because I. Personal experience, it was a great option for us. It was. Online, but it was also the time when everything, not everything was online, but a lot was online and really opens things up. And allows the flexibility during busy year times.
So the other thing on here, so for alternative P E options, so we've got the high school P E courses, we've got directed athletics. Um, we've got the, both the academic year and summer school. There are alternate P E options. Uh, one is through running start. So they, and running start is now paid for. Um, the state now covers it. Um, we don't, students used to in the summer, they have to pay out of pocket to attend running start. Courses. Now it's covered. Um. So students who are in uh tenth or eleventh, I'm sorry, eleventh or twelfth grade standing. Um, can, are eligible to participate and enroll in running start classes. Um, and for example, this summer, and I linked it in here, this summer there is. Um, an asynchronous, completely asynchronous, um, online P E option. Um, through running start. So, um, they, they have educators who have put together entire courses. Via on canvas. Um, so for students who aren't able to attend our in-person P E, if they are. Um, rising eleventh or twelfth graders, and that's going to be an issue, and they say like, I still really need P E to happen in the summer, there is an option for them. Um. And then for really unique circumstances, we always have a course waiver option. Um, and P E is a for, one of those courses that a student could have waived and it could be for medical reasons. Um, that they were never healthy enough to be able to take P E or something happened during the course of their high school and prevented them from. Um, and so there is always that opportunity for students for those very unique circumstances. To submit a waiver to the principal to waive that, um. As a grad requirement.
Um, I have a question back on, on directed athletics. Like the hour requirement currently is seventy-five hours to get, for example, off-campus directed athletics. Um, and you're raising that to a hundred. Um, can you talk a little bit about the reasoning behind that, especially if the sort of butts in seat time for in-person P E is eighty-five hours?
So that came out of, um, the work of the athletic director, coaches, teachers, student athletes, and they looked at. Um, all of the current high school sports that were offered and they looked at how many hours. Students were expected to participate in a regular high school. Uh, athletic conference. Competitive team. And it averaged out to be about a hundred hours. So that's how they came up.
So like if you're on the soccer team and you're practicing five days a week, you're. So, uh, um, and do you anticipate a bunch of, of sports that are currently being on?
so, um, and do you anticipate a bunch of of sports that are currently being on for directed athletics to not be able to get credit at this point?
I don't think so. The the one that stands out in my mind is badminton, just I know that because we were talking about it and how how might that fit in, you know, if if a sport can't possibly find ten weeks or there are no other schools that are competing at that time, we didn't wanna penalize students. So we talked about it could be that the coach works with the AD and principal to say, okay, our season is only gonna be five weeks. How might we still take two years of participation to still encourage participation and activity uh to get to that point five credit?
What you're talking about like off-campus directed.
Right, you're talking about the off-campus directed athletics, this is the third option.
Because like, say, club soccer, right, I'm not talking.
No, no, I'm just saying as an example, is is typically three days a week for two hours. It's not five days a week, but it's longer. Right? Or is it not? For the off-campus, the requirements are three times a week. So for off-campus directed athletics, the practice requirements are three times a week, not five. But a hundred hours, but it's still a hundred hours. For example, the mountain bike team practices three times a week in addition to having six races over the course of a season. Last year was ninety hours, I would imagine the coach would just add an extra hour of practice or whatever to to fill it, or a cup of fall in spring season and and, you know, kind of. Um, another question on directed athletics is where are we on the idea of marching band qualifying for directed athletics?
So the first step was to establish like what are the criteria for directed athletic credit? Um, now I'm gonna bring the band, fine arts folks, uh with the PE folks and talk about you know, what what does this look like? So first, first it will be your first blush, does this meet? Does what you do, what you offer, meet these criteria? Yes or no? Um, if no, what's the next step? If yes, what's the next step? Um, so that that's the next conversation. First it had to be PE and summer school, and now it's um fine arts. Uh, but we intentionally didn't take um, any one group, right? So like, we didn't put an asterisk to say like, for badminton. Because, you know, but we were talking about like, what might this look like for other groups? We wanted to make sure it would apply to martial arts and to rowing and to mountain bike club, so that there was a consistent something to compare against. It wasn't built for any singular program.
I'm just curious whether when you get to that kind of next stage of things, whether there might ultimately be an opportunity to do something like a half of a PE course for for kids who are, let's say, doing martial arts. Cause part of the goal of this is, you know, to teach kids about kind of healthy exercise and stuff, but part is just to get them moving. You know, in this day and age when like many kids like my own will just basically sit with an iPad all day long, like rather than actually move their bodies. And so if you have a kid that's already out there and is doing martial arts, you don't want to like penalize them for picking the wrong sport, you know, and so it would be interesting to explore as you move on to this next stage, just whether there's some way where if they're like, well, I'm gonna be doing fifty hours and like my coach will sign up on that. Whether there's some way they can make it up without having to take the full amount of PE classes or PE light.
Uh, I think, I think there will definitely be an opportunity. Um, you know, we we talked about offering point-two-five credits. We talked about um, you know, some neighboring districts only offer point-two-five credits per season. So in order for a student athlete to earn um, uh, one-point-oh directed athletic credit, they would have had to participate for all four years. Um, or in multiple sports for a few years. Um, and that's to encourage, you know, continued participation. We opted to keep the point-five credit for directed athletics and not get into the business of point-two-five credits cause that just is a lot of make-work for our registrar and the counselors to be tracking in point-two-five increments. Um, but we we have talked about the potential of there being, you know, uh, an outlier case where a student
You don't have to complete it in, like if it's the directed athletics, it could, it could be like you could be in running all year and get the number of hours that you need and then get half a credit and it's only assigned to one semester?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Okay.
If that's the same thing.
It does not, yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. And just so you know, I don't know, we, I got a quarter credit for every marching band season. Because marching band was, it was like one season of sport and the movement and all that. And so we got, if you do four years, you got a credit. That's what it used to be here. I don't know when that stopped. And especially when they're preparing for the parades. That's a lot of marching. And a lot of time, you know.
Like three hour practices.
And then three-hour practices.
Then band camp.
And we didn't do band camp. No, so they do a lot, they do a lot that maybe you have to do.
Yeah.
I
Uh, so this is just, uh, try to put on one slide, kind of what it, what MIHS summer school PE is and what it is, what did I, what was the word, what it is not. Uh, so what is summer school PE? It's aligned with state standards and MIHS expectations. Uh, it's a reduced number of hours of seat time for flexibility for students. And it's an opportunity to provide flexibility for students' academic year course schedules. Uh, what it's not is a course that doesn't align to standards or a credit for lifestyle activities. Um, so I wanna, I I wanna share that some, some people were fired up in the survey responses, you know, like my student is traveling, is gonna be at, you know, scout camp. Uh, is gonna be volunteering, is going to be doing XYZ, like we don't want there to be any parameters for summer school. Why can't it just be a form that I sign off to say that they're doing things like? I love that your kid is gonna be hiking in Europe and going to scout camp and learning some new skills, and those are wonder- wonderful things. But those are not um credit-bearing activities working towards standards. Just like we don't ha- give fine arts credit for somebody coloring in an adult coloring book. Or practicing the piano at home. Like, there, there are some things that are just wonderful to be wonderful, um, and enriching in life, but they're not credit-bearing. And so, um, you know, I I can't say that I'm apologizing for not meeting those needs because I do believe in um having some expectations and standards. Um, but I feel good about finding a common ground where we've provided flexibility, reduced hours, flexibility in how to complete the work. Um, while allowing students to take the credits that they're interested in during the academic year. Health. Um, similarly to PE, uh, key considerations were aligning our course expectations, especially after COVID. Um, health was one of those subjects that was taught by uh ABA um during summer school. And with some pretty sensitive um content uh about nutrition, mental health, uh, sex education, um, having people who weren't trained in that or um really up to date with the laws and the expectations and standards um, was challenging. And so we wanted to ensure that we had endorsed educators who were are professionals in that specific arena. They're teaching the content with students. Um, so we wanted to continue flexibility to complete grad requirements and open student schedules during the academic year. And again, there's sixty-four slots to get point five, so one, one time out of sixty-four times, a student needs to complete health. Uh, so we've got courses listed for academic year at summer school, those link out to the um course catalogs. All courses listed are point-five credits and count towards the health grad requirement. They include a letter grade, uh, part of the requirement of health and why uh we don't operate online is the requirement um, that it be uh CPR and first aid certified. Um, so health at summer school will have to be taught by a health endorsed teacher. It'll include CPR and first aid training and certification, um, and includes the revised required content from the state. Um, the summer school versus the academic year, again, thirty-six hours of in-person time um versus eighty-five during the school year and more opportunity for asynchronous um to provide some flexibility during the summer.
That is, that's it.
That's it.
The one thing I would add is, you know, in this transition year, um, if, you know, Jamie and I have talked and Jamie's talked to PE teachers and health teachers, we know that there's some kids who might be caught in a little bit of the twist in between. And so we are working with individual families around some plans to help some students um, who might have been planning that trip and they're gonna miss the three days and um, so there is a lot of work going on case by case with families. Jamie's working some families, I'm working with some. Um, and, you know, we're, we're not trying to create barriers that prohibit students from graduating or anything, but we are trying, as, as Jamie said, to put some more um parameters around the credits we're awarding. So, thank you.
Well, just a thank for all that we have done. Uh, as feedback from the community, uh, if, and I think I mentioned before, if things could be made available way ahead of time, uh, it makes a lot for parents that do have multiple kids to find what they're gonna do with uh for your parents or vacations or but uh it was very close to the summer, so so that was even a good buy to to include in the, for that, or include um for us, it will for everybody. But, great, thank you.
It's nice to hear how much work and thought went into this. I think, you know, we heard about the changes, but that was like the tip of the iceberg, right? There's all this behind it, so. I think it's really smart what you're doing with making these clear benchmarks of like the requirements and then addressing individuals sort of like and want to get ready for this wishes. Once you have those benchmarks in place, I think that's a really sort of fair and transparent way for to evaluate the courses that are up, that people wanna get ready for. Um, so I think you've done a really great job there.
Um, I agree. I think that it's in line with our fundamentals. Um, you know, if we value rigorous um offerings and and abiding by the state requirements, then we do that across the board. We don't share which courses we get to align with our standards and and actually require things. So um, I think that's really important. I think that's a really good message for our community, both students and parents. And I totally hear you about the summer and the planning, and it's nice to know that there's some flexibility. I know hopefully that won't be an issue in the future as it'll start the week after school gets out and then go through July and everyone's gonna know. And plus, there's so many other opportunities to get those credits. Um, that uh, yeah, I mean, I I don't really worry about this restricting kids at all. I think it's um you know, go take an academic class in the summer too, because you have the PE to balance out, you know, sitting in a classroom behind a book or, you know, outside being active. So, you know, there's lots of different ways to look at balance of it, but thank you. I think this is, um, you know, changes change.
Thank you. Um, okay, next up, we have post-monitoring language review board policy eighteen-hundred-oh-one fundamental five, um. The note on here that is that the board wished to discuss adding other courses which fulfill fine art credit to the student demographics measurement.
So the, what I had heard from your conversation around fundamental five at the last meeting was that, you know, students can now earn fine arts credit for radio and some other um other courses. So rather than just limiting the fine arts, we've been using band, um, you know, orchestra, theater arts, there was a discussion you had of expanding that. So just wanted to reopen that, um, if we'd wanna be making changes to the fundamental.
Is, I know radio is, is uh TV production getting the fine arts credit?
It isn't, I don't believe so.
Is there gonna be a push for that? Cause to me it seems very similar.
I don't know if the framework is written the same at the state level, which is why radio was able to be. I'd have to look at, I'd have to talk to our team.
Yeah, I guess my address was less like the the language with the fundamental, just sort of to align like the reporting
Yep.
that we get on the fundamental to just capture whatever, you know, where we consider to be fine arts.
So, so it's adjusting the measure.
It is just like, yeah, it was the management, yeah, like it wasn't anything language-wise.
So align the reporting to the credits we get.
Yeah.
To qualify.
Yeah, true.
Makes sense. Yeah.
Kind of like a dumb hook, yeah.
It's easier. And that actually doesn't need action because
It's just part of the law.
Part of the monitoring, okay. Any other suggestions on that one? Uh, moving on to E, post-monitoring language review, uh, financial administration. Board wish to return to item five and consider changes in language. And item five is about the annual budget reserves of at least eight percent with a target of ten for the prior fiscal year ended as of August thirty-first that are adequate to be consistent with best financial practices for public school districts.
It was that last clause that are adequate to be consistent with best financial practices for public school districts that you were having a conversation.
Yeah, so like, my comment here was in the, uh, for the monitoring of the fundamental, not the language.
Right.
But then we tie it to, for the purposes of bond rating. It used to be, well, like, when we just did the, the bond rating for incompetence or not, there's language about bond.
Oh, in the actual, so it's not.
Yeah, so yes, it's not in the, but it's not in the funda- the language in the fundamental, but it's in monitoring the fundamental. And I thought that by tying it to bond rating that it was a little bit confusing because the reasons are really independent of impacts on bonds. Um, and so the, again, it's one of those things that, at least in my view, the language is fine and it's written here. It's just in monitoring and it's to, to delete the, for the purposes of bond purposes. Um, that was a little bit confusing.
I mean, I could pull.
Yeah, but do we say number five?
Seven. Oh, oh, we seven, number five.
Yeah, so underneath reasonable interpretation, it says the interest of the board is to ensure that the district obtain the lowest possible interest rate on bonds authorized by the builders.
Yeah, and 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 mine was that, like, it's 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 not the bond rating, it's it's prudent financial, you know, management and.
And you, yeah, I mean, that was, that, that was the reason that it used to be given for the, the, you know, having this as possible. I mean, I
I I don't need, I don't need to, to, to words with language and you know, during this meeting, but i- in some point, I think that, I'm not sure if this is gonna, you know, just be proposed from the consent agenda when it comes up next year, um, for just the interpretation, in my view, could be tied to that.
Um, I I think it needs to be more of a discussion just because, um, I mean, we're basically making a value statement. Um, do you wanna, do you wanna work on it and we can and propose something and we can put it on the next agenda? My concern is just typically if we kind of put it off the next year, we're gonna forget.
Well, I guess the, like, the question is procedurally, because it's, it's the interpretation for the fundamental, is that then something that we proposed, you proposed for the interpretation, like the fundamental, I think is fine.
You have to approve it, but I, I am happy to propose something for you, that's easy.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Who knows?
Okay.
Any other concern on that one? Um. Next one, oh, eleven, facilities and capital assets. Um, asked revisit one D enrollment, board wish to contemplate this item in light of open enrollment. Um, the present for annual group review by the board, the district's long-range facilities plan inclusive of updates regarding building capacity and utilization, capital projects and enrollment. When we added the enrollment, which was recent, like this year, last year, um, it was uh, just to be making sure that we were considering enrollment with regards to our facilities. Right?
Yeah, it was, um, so we will, instead of just you wanted to also see kind of that utilization and capacity in the buildings, and that's driven by enrollment.
Right.
At the last meeting, you had also kind of talked about, well, we now have enrollment from the district and then we have staff enrollment, we have city employee enrollment, and now we also have open enrollment. So you were kind of contemplating whether or not enrollment needed to be defined a little bit more, or we're comfortable with what enrollment looks.
I mean, to me, enrollment is like kids sitting in a seat. It doesn't really matter where they came from or what their parents employment situation is. Like, I think for all intents and purposes, as long as we know somewhere what the breakdown is, we need that information.
For purposes of buildings.
Yeah.
Right, for, for this one, I agree. I think that, you know, I think I think that, you know, I think as we look towards next April, unless it's earlier, that where we get a recommendation on open enrollment, because we get one every year. That that a more of a breakdown can be provided in the.
For sure.
In the presentation and recommendation.
Yes, for sure.
I think that would be a more appropriate place to further delineate.
Yeah.
And I believe, I don't, I probably won't be able to pull it off. Um. Very quickly, but I believe it's the December report when they bring to you, um. We give you an enrollment report that has to do with when students are leaving or coming to the district and. It can easily part of that too, so.
Great.
No problem. Okay.
Anyone feel different, want something else? All right, moving on to consent agenda. Motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second, uh, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye, uh, student.
Aye.
And board.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, passes one zero five zero. And moving on to superintendent announcements. Sorry, it's been. Yes, and you will take a one and a half minute reason.
One and a half minutes.
Okay, our turn, we're three.
And I have is, uh, just a reminder, I'm out of district tomorrow. Aaron is in district and then half day on Monday, but I'll be around you on Monday.
I'm here.
All right, otherwise, we covered it all.
Um, legislative report. I got nothing on that. You don't wanna talk about Monday? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna just talk at length about Monday. Um, we have the Boston Regional Conference. Oh, that one. That actually wasn't, I wasn't even talking about. Oh, I know. No, that's more, um, I mean, we've got, uh, uh. Christina and Deborah and Fred and I, the rest of the, we bought office. Monday, we went to the Bob the Assen. Is that what you're talking about? Hmm, yeah, for me, so it's a fair story. Um, to the Bob Ferguson fundraiser with a lot of our local elected officials. And it was perfect news view of this view with the, you know, government space. Um, which were great. Yeah, and talked to him and then Deborah, I talked to him more about his introduction of agenda. And possibility of, uh, our board being able to weigh in or serve on any sort of like institutional maybe that can make pull together. So that we would have a say for our district, um, reserve our board, if we have some stuff like that, so, yeah. Um, and if anyone has any. Uh, you know, connections or interest in other candidates. Um, you know, I think it's a great time to really build those relationships when there are candidates and hungry or for. Connections. Hey, that's just natural, right? Um, okay, announcements, inquiries and reports, board reports. Uh, I'll send anything again.
Not much. We're interviewing for the next school board rep next week, so it's exciting.
You have a lot of candidates?
Um, we have like eight, I think, eight or nine, yeah. So a good amount, yeah. But yeah, excited to find someone new.
Everyone wants to do the next session.
Yeah, not even, it was the bad example because she's not here, so.
Is 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 able for that process too?
Yeah, yeah, so all the, you know.
Thanks.
And so, yeah.
That was fun. In person, yeah. Sorry.
It's confirming.
Um, Christina.
Uh, I'm, I think that this session.
It's good.
Um, I was solely at the Republican Equity Advisory Council meeting. Um, and that was, uh, it was talked more about, uh, kind of, um. How to live in another better world and how kind of the district and their focus is both like when we have those visions. Uh, and there's a a team within that the CAC that will be reviewing on level five. And and gave some, uh, great, uh, learning opportunities for everybody that I'm I sent to. Uh, that we contend the summer, there's one one that you're invited to participate that I'm trying to look the name. Um, then it will be in August seven fifteen to seventeen that it's, uh, related to, uh, uh, P E I. So so we'll send you the information. So if you want to participate, uh, uh. They will have to, you know, this limitation, so. And besides that, I think that I've been understanding that different events like all of you and the years. So, uh, the most recent one, the band concert, which I love going to those events. I think that I I I wish it would pass and all island events because they're so good. Uh, so, um. And I'm sure that there's some other events that I have been, but I have just been forgetting, so we'll go now. Yeah.
I've gotten a thing I've been very busy since. It's fair enough. Um, I was on the P T A advocacy call. Uh, they, uh, talked a lot about the cell phone policy issue that's bubbling up with the parents. Um, and where we sort of came down on that was that it would be great for them, I think, that it's not a board issue, it's a principal issue. And it would be great if the principals, especially at the middle school level, could reiterate that policies to parents. Um, because I feel like we're not getting guidance, but I that there is guidance out there, they just need to have it again. Um, and then at the I M S, uh, app, we talked about the P E S survey. Um, and we had a little fun, uh, shocking wake up call for the principal. Because it turned out that parents use the survey in a completely different way than they thought that they did. So then we sort of watched them, turned how we arrived at our answers to a survey like that. And then they realized that they, the fundamentals of how they thought people were answered were not the same ways people were looking at it. So that's, I mean, that's a survey question that can be addressed at a completely other time by someone who's not us, but, um.
It was one question or?
Well, it's it's all those questions of like, you know, do you feel you could communicate with your child, child's parent, your teacher or whatever? And people would say, well, I said, I gave it a one out of five because I've never needed to communicate with my child's teacher, you know, like whatever. And then that comes off as like my child's teacher can't communicate, but what they meant was like, it's not applicable to me. But there's no like not applicable answer to give. Or they would give us three out of fives because it's like I'm neutral on this, but what they're, the principals were like, oh, no, they're giving a three. That must be like a, you know, literally great, but it actually meant as if I need to, I know I can.
Right.
Okay. So they, there's no like non-applicable answer to give, so that's a problem maybe for that survey, but I'm not a survey person, so. That's not something that was to address, that's a survey person's thing to address. Um, was also the spring band concert, I just wanna call out Elena Lil, who was the senior soloist. Um, did a fantastic job. I was at the state solo ensemble competition in Ellensburg last weekend. Um, many, many, many students there. Um, I know like Alana, the fashionista, I don't know her last name. She, uh, came in first in the state, so, you know, best in the state in the fashion. And, um, many of our other groups are large brass ensemble, um, Elena Lil again, uh. Chamber Music Ensemble, all placed in those groups, um. So that was good. Uh, my own child did get top marks in all three of his competitions, nothing less than perfect. Did not fix anything except barcel, barcel. Um, the North and Jazz Walk was last weekend and they, when the jazz ensemble group played there. Um, in the theater, that was a great to see. It's a fantastic event. There's a lot of local high schools that have jazz ensembles. Um, playing, um, including just. Jazz ensembles in the area. That was super fun. And then this morning, it was my pleasure to represent the school board at the High School, um, P T S A Awards. Um, it was really great, uh, and I just wanna call out specifically the educator, outstanding educator of the year awards, which are given to Eric Goldhammer, Christine Canyon and Patrick Ridby. And it was just really inspiring to hear the nomination letters that they got and, um. And, you know, the value that they're bringing to this school, as well as the huge amount of volunteers that make our schools proud. I did a lot last week, so.
When you say you brought the, uh, maiden board, you were there, right? Uh, let's tell the, uh, maybe, oh, yeah.
Oh, I forgot.
I did do a thing. I was literally in a group. Yeah, but I went to the, uh, the A L D, uh, May fourth event at, uh. Uh, Northwood, which was fantastic, like really happy to see so much good turnout there. And they had, you know, the district was represented there and people from all these different organizations and service writers and. They've had cookies, like, yeah, it was excellent, lots of games for kids, um, food trucks. I, it was the first time, I believe it was the first time they they've done an event like this and, um, I hope they'll repeat it. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I did do a thing.
Um, no committees to report on for me. Um, just one quick P S A, uh, this month along with all the others, it's also Military Appreciation Month. Um, given, uh, the presence of the military, particularly in our state, um, both, you know, naval, uh, army. Um, just, you know, submarine, like, of course. Um, I thought that I would, uh, you know, mention that, um, as well as, you know, second year, uh, more between, you know, war between Russia and Ukraine. But the importance of military service and the ultimate sacrifice that everyone who serves is willing.
Um. It's been a busy couple weeks for me too. Uh, had a P T A council meeting, final meeting of the year on Wednesday. Um, I just. Um, it was really an overview, um, and they. Like Fred said, acknowledged, um, the end's really great, uh, communication work, um, it's making a difference. Uh. The other big announcement was that fireworks are now no longer legal. I'm sorry, I'm.
You can purchase them.
What?
You can purchase them.
You can purchase them this year, but not after this year. But they're not legal to.
Right, so that's just part of that year.
That solves that one.
Why purchase one year?
No, 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 they need, it's it's like a one year status card requirement. They have to give the vendors notice.
I see.
That they can sell, so they can sell this year.
Yes.
But you can shoot them off.
Yeah.
So and then after. After this year, you don't, they don't have to issue permits for them, so.
I see.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Um, I walked in at the end of the P T A awards today, a little double duty, but, um, I was posted. Be, uh, I was honored to present someone, but I didn't and I got got a backup to do that. So it was way faster than I thought, but but it really is an amazing, um, group of, uh, you know, a lot of the award went to. People, uh, people graduating seniors who it's their la- last student within the district and really recognizing the kind of lifetime. Um, dedication to P T A. I think, um, you know, from the P T A council, it was interesting to talk about, um, the the frustration as well. I mean, I think it's a combination of things, but of lower membership. And I'm just wondering if we wanna, well, talk about, you know, supporting P T A in terms of, you know, in current. And making sure that there is the education piece and, um. The importance of joining P T A and not feeling like if you join P, I mean, it's thirty dollars, I think, twenty five, thirty dollars for the year. And, um, you don't have to commit to going to any meetings or doing anything but joining because so much of of what they provided for all students. Um, and so some sort of membership push, um, you know, they're struggling. It's it's the same people who volunteer for everything and, um, they're tired and, you know, with the smaller elementaries, it's fewer people to draw from. So, you know, it's it's those typical struggles and I'm just, um, hoping we can support them on, you know, figuring some of that stuff out. It's not really policy board work, but, you know, just supporting our community partners. Uh, I also went to the the salad community day on Saturday and amazing event. Jessie Biaggi and, um, Jennifer Crispy really took the lead on putting this together. And I know with the help of Dr. Booby and getting funding and the road we donated and, you know, it was really, I mean, having resource, it was a resource fair, it was bouncy houses, it was adaptive bikes. You know, seeing students of all abilities, um, coming together was really, you know, really focused on the younger kids. But but to have, you know, some of our community resources, uh, of parents who have gone through it, who now provide support. You know, to say, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel, things like that. I I've heard, um, some of the feedback I was hearing was, you know, they want it yearly and and people were like, can you come do this for our district? Um, outside, so so it was really, and that was all volunteers and, um, and so huge impact for our community. Um, also, on Saturday, I, um, wandered over to Crest Fest and the plant sale. Um, and I think the plant sale sale continues, right? They used to do it multiple weekends.
One more, is it this weekend?
This weekend.
Yes, it's this, or one more, a week from this weekend.
Oh, okay, we do it, okay. So if you can hit it, it's, um, good, it's really good prices, it's really pretty, it's plants and it's, I mean, vegetables and flowers and all sorts of stuff. Um, and that our, what I call porticulture students work on all year to be able to sell plant sale, if you're not familiar with what that is. Um, I know many of us were able to attend the schools foundation breakfast. Um, some of us hosted tables. Um, I wanna just kind of recognize Christina for, um, being willing to host, um, you know, new, new families. And really reaching out, I mean, that's above and beyond to reach out to new families to, personal invitation goes so far. Um, and so thank you for doing that. I I think.
I will say that I I sent a lot of emails, um, and I hope that a lot of those who receive, uh, attended to the different tables.
Yes, you fill the table.
Well, I mean, you think of that mostly, uh, uh, a lot, I got a lot of replies of sitting somewhere else or.
Okay.
You know, saying encourage or two, but, um, um, but it's, yeah, I just say.
The the whole point is, it, I think that personal is relationships and the personal invitation and it really goes far. Um, P T A council awards are tomorrow, nine thirty, B F W. It's always a great event and, um, recognizing educators, volunteers, um, and community partners. Um, regional meeting that was already mentioned. And I just wanna make a plug for the, um, the international entrepreneur class is putting on the Mother's Day five K on Saturday. I think it's a little bit confusing because they don't have highlighted that it's Saturday. Um, I think it's a two, right?
Yeah, it's a two.
Uh, if you wanna volunteer, I'm sure they'll take people, come at noon and they'll, I'm sure they'll find a spot if you want to or.
Run it.
Or run, walk in it and, um, I know you can sign up there, but, um, you know, this is, this is their, uh, nonprofit. And and donate most of their proceeds back that they make from. this is their, uh, nonprofit, and, and donate most of their proceeds back that they make from, um, the different ventures. Um, and I imagine Ms. McClellan's okay, I got it as a parent of a student in the class, but they are presenting their, um, their.
End of.
End of year report, um, on, on June fourth at one thirty, it's one thirty, two thirty here, um, in admin building, I assume in this room.
Yeah.
Uh, where they're reporting their, their end of year report and all their financials and all the work that they've done. It's, it's the culmination of, of the business program, um, and, and I know a huge highlight for, for most, if not all of the students that participate in it, so that should be a great, um, opportunity as well, and that's it.
I have one add on to the SSALD event, I remember now that, um, I spoke with the folks at the, the booth from Athletes for Kids, which is a volunteer, fantastic volunteer mentor program where, where athletes in the high schools mentor kids with special needs, and those, those special needs may be something like, you know, Down Syndrome or developmental disability, but can also be like ADHD or anxiety, or, you know, depression, that kind of thing, and it's a fantastic program. And they mentioned that Mercer Island, even though we're relatively small district, we're now their, their third, we have the third highest number of volunteers in our district matched with like buddies, you know, kind of like younger buddies, which is great. So I'm very proud of our student athletes, uh, for stepping up like that.
Also, on that note, Athletes for Kids needs girl volunteers, so if you know.
They always need girl volunteers.
Yeah.
Do you know any girls that wanna, uh, volunteer for Athletes for Kids?
Uh, is that outdoor for alls, is that?
No, it's totally different. I know it's, I was confused, because it sounds like, Athletes for Kids is something where somebody, um, where like a, a, you know, like a sophomore, junior, senior who is, I don't know about ninth grader, but, but at least.
All the high schoolers.
Yeah, all the high schoolers, okay, are matched with a younger kid, so an elementary school or a middle school kid. And they either meet up for like a weekly, kind of like playtime, like in the park, like, you know, like a, a parent present. Or they'll come over to your home, again, you have to have a parent present, um, they'll come over to the home and like hang out with the kid. And it's just like this very cool older buddy who like, you know, maybe they'll do a little homework with you, maybe they'll take you outside and play basketball, maybe you'll just like do a craft or something like that, but it's, it's this very specific, and they train the mentors very well, and, um, but there's always a shortage of girls.
Yeah.
So girl athletes are.
It's a year's program.
It's a commitment for a whole year, yeah.
They do their orientation in September, but you, I think that students, uh, uh, and like the peers will, will, uh, decide how much on when they will meet, depending on, um.
The family schedule.
Yes, yes, yes.
Of course, they're good.
And of course, their sport schedules, so.
It'll also be like more than years, if you like, I know like a friend of mine had a buddy that they've had for three years, and they meet with their buddy.
Which is amazing.
Meetly for three years.
Become like a really, really important relationship for a kid.
Yeah.
And support.
Yeah, I will, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Loading.
Moving to a chair.
Second, and any opposed? All in favor, I'll second the pod, and board.
Hi.
One oh five one, I'll show them this. Board adjourned, I see all, uh. This is a long one, I didn't.